You guys don't like the horse down, it's a lot of uh, a lot of buildings with impact being built and I just saw uh, what is it where the Century 21 building is and then there was something else that just came up too uh, what about the Staples?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that whole area of the train station.
Yes.
It's crazy.
I know.
Yeah, I got a survey at the, the site Sunday at the Music Box tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Would you want to throw out the stage lights behind the screen? Yeah. Okay, cool. Frank, how are you? Nice to see you. How's everything?
Good, you?
Have a nice Thanksgiving?
We did, yeah, we did. For uh, Gera, Christmas, uh, much family coming in, so let's begin.
How about you?
Good, thank you.
All good, yeah, we had fourteen men and a lot together in a house.
Where's it at?
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I thought it was three or four and she's there.
Anyhow, always good.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know when you're gonna be back.
Yeah.
Hello.
Well, this is uh, a lot of the people that are here have been here and so it's uh, it's been pretty, pretty well attended also.
How are you?
So, thanks for coming over.
Yeah, yeah.
Should we give on today?
It's hard to figure out where to see because they've booked it, lots of, many people.
Yeah, yeah, you just gotta have to uh, you just gotta have the accent, listen. I think that's the thing, so you're gonna be able to hear everything, so that's a good thing, because everybody's got microphones, so you'll be able to hear everything. Might not be able to see the people talking, but all the presentations will be up on the screen, so you'll be able to hear everything, no big problem.
Saw a cartoon, little boy sitting on Santa's lap in the apartment, so instead of asking me if I'm good, he goes, we am good.
Yeah, right? I know that it doesn't, you can sit where you like, I just know that usually the, what just says the experts sit here, but you can sit where you like, I'm just giving you a heads up.
I know that's true.
That's all. Honestly, it'll be fine, because most of the time if they're talking back and forth, then I can see it anyway, so.
Hey, Merry Christmas to you too. So, microphones are off. Frank, if you get in the way, I'll just say to lean back, you're fine.
Need to move it closer.
Is it working? Okay, so this is the December sixteenth Mars Plains Planning Board Meeting, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of America, which is safe, my mission under God, individual liberty, justice, law.
I hereby announce that this meeting is being held in accordance with Chapter two thirty-one of the Open Public Meeting Act. Proper notice of the meeting dates has been given to the Mars Newsweek and the Mars County Daily Record and posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Ball. This meeting is a judicial proceeding, any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all time. Roll call please.
Yes, here, President. President.
President. Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Pezzo.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
President.
And Mr. Trump.
President.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public on matters that are not on the agenda for tonight? No, seeing none, we'll move on. Next, we have uh, new business, it's uh, with regard to our contract for legal counsel. Every year, the planning board enters into a contract with our attorney for legal services provided to the planning board, and every year, the contract has to be approved by the board. The contract for twenty twenty-five is the exact same contract as we entered into in twenty twenty-four, and as I mentioned at our first meeting, this law firm has been representing the planning board for about thirty-five years. All the board members have received and reviewed a copy of the contract. Is there any discussion or comments or questions from the board regarding the approval of entering into a contract with Maraniti Falcon? No, could we then have a motion to approve the contract for legal services provided to the Mars Plains Planning Board by the law firm of Maraniti Falcon for the year twenty twenty-five? Second?
Second.
Yeah, uh, we have roll call please.
Mr. Warburg, sir?
Yes.
You're back again?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepper?
Yes.
Mrs. McHusky?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Pezzo?
Yes.
Mayor Carr?
Yes.
And Mr. Trump?
Yes.
So here we're going to.
On this issue.
On this issue, okay.
I just want to say to the board, uh, I appreciate your, uh, your trust and um, I'll be, you know, again, as I say, uh, I say to the board, I sort of have a trust every meeting, every month, um, everyone, I appreciate that you're listening to, uh, leave a like, uh, five, um, set after your trust.
Okay, so uh, next we have application PB one twenty-four McDonald's USA LLC, and before we get started, Mr. Brewer is going to uh.
Address it to me?
Yes.
Is the microphone on? Yes. I'll try and speak close to the microphone, um, this, if the board will bear with me for a few moments, I want to address something that came up last meeting and have come up in the last few days, uh, just to address some issues that will be coming up. One, and this was probably resolved by the, something I'm going to read from the applicant's attorney, Ms. Koemer, brings up, so I want to address it a little bit again, this was a question of testimony and a video about Bayonne. So, I went and looked, I went through the transcript of how this issue came up. The issue came up, it was not presented by the applicant at all. What happened is during cross-examination, the, one of the engineer was asked, um, do you know of any other sites that are adjacent to residential area? And he said, that one of the sites was failed and happened to meet that. Nobody's making a comparison, they're saying that's a good or a bad thing, that's simply how it came up. The applicant hasn't done it, it was simply on a cross-examination, and as I've said before, other sites, what happens on other sites aren't relevant on this site, so um, as I said, there's, I'm going to read something else from the attorney that brings this up, so I did want to address that a little bit. Number two, the question, there's been a question about um, whether or not an additional variance is required for parking in the front yard. And Mr. Stec went through the analysis, I went through it independently, it's, I'll give you my opinion to start and I'll explain why. I do not believe that an additional variance is required for that, but I'll review why. The zoning portion of the ordinance that would be relevant is found at thirteen dash five point seven D one, and it states, no part of any off-street parking areas shall extend into any required front yard more than the front yard setback requirement of the zone in which it is situated unless specifically permitted in the respective zone. So, it obviously allows for an exception there, and the question is, is it specifically permitted in the respective zone? Another section of the ordinance thirteen dash four point fourteen C has an attachment which is Schedule A, and it is, minimum distances in feet for location of parking and loading areas, and specifically there's by zone, B one, B two, B three, or one, all of the specific zones, and, and gives distance from the street right-of-way and from property lines. So, the, the exception of unless specifically permitted in the respective zones doesn't say where that commission would be. In another area of the municipal code, it most definitely does allow parking at a specific area, uh, distance from the street right-of-way, which would be a front yard, and property lines, which would be the front yard. So, that's, that's my um, review of the ordinance, why additional barriers isn't required for the distance where the parking is from, in the front yard center. That's issue number two. Um, issue number three, the questions have been brought up about performance standards, um, whether or not they should be proven before, um, and established. There's a specific provision in your zoning orders that says, uh, it is, let's see if I get it, section. I want to get the right section to it, to the record. Thirteen dash five point one, twenty-four, performance standards. Prior to or as a condition of the approval of any application, um, and then I'm just going forward, but the important part of it, as a condition of the approval of any application, the applicant shall supply evidence satisfactory, satisfactory to the approving board that the proposed use will conform fully with all the applicable performance standards stated here. And typically, the way this board has done it is all performance standards, which in section include air pollution, smoke, uh, open burning, odors, wastes, noise, layer, vibration, fire and explosive hazards are done as a condition of approval. That's the way this board has typically done it, you can do it as you wish, but it's typically that you have a condition that post, as a condition of getting their building, their, their, their C I, that they have to demonstrate conformance with the performance standard. So you, you do require that, that's always a condition, something like this, but I just wanted to address this. So that, that issue had come up, that is typically how the board has done it, it was your choice, but the, the ordinance specifically said you can either do it before or after as a condition. That's second, that's third issue. Uh, fourth issue, the app, the um, several members of the public, the objectors, hired Heather Koemer. Um, she was unable to make it today, I spoke with her, she asked, she said there's an issue and I understand it, um, there was an issue, she couldn't come today. There was a doubt whether or not she'd be able to make it Wednesday too, and we discussed the best way to deal with her absence, and she was okay, I'm going to convey my conversation to her. Uh, I believe her clients may be here and they can confirm that I'm telling accurately conveying that they weren't on the call. Um, that they do not have a traffic expert, um, that she was, she was, she's brought up an issue regarding a, which she will, which I will read at my point. Um, about a, a potential conflict with one of the members and the way we'll deal with this, I will read it into the record and I will provide a response and that board member then can respond appropriately. And then at the time, if we get to that, tonight, where the public is speaking, her, all she needs is her closing statement will be read by her client who she believed would be here and would read her closing statement. She was okay, she appreciated that accommodation, if the board is okay, because it's a, it's a tweet where I would be reading her argument into the record on the conflict issue, and her client will be reading her closing statement, but she was happy with that accommodation because she was unable to make that meeting, that's the board's decision. Fifth issue, um, there's been an inquiry about a member or two from the public about um, children or people under eighteen testifying. I, I went through, the, the municipal manuse law does address it. Municipal manuse law says you're not barred, you're not banned by the rules of evidence, but they're pretty good, God. The New Jersey rules of evidence, um, at one point in the past, used to restrict um, witnesses from under a certain age, you knew they were under fourteen, there was a presumption they couldn't testify. That's been removed, but there has to be some level of understanding of, that there has to be relevant evidence, they have to understand the truth under oath, understand that there can be a punishment if they don't, um, if they don't tell the truth, but there's also has to be relevance, and so I, I don't know the age, I don't know if any children are here or if they're going to seek to testify. So in balancing this, you know, if somebody's seventeen and a half years old, yeah, it's a pretty good presumption, you know, they're just about an adult. If someone's three and a half, if they have testimony, that would be relevant for planning, probably not, there's no magic line, there's some place in between there. I would recommend twelve years old is a, is a, is as good as anything, and then there might not be one, but I did want to address this. On the fairness issue, bearing in mind that if they're already children, just like everybody else in the public, they'll be under relative, there'll be a few questions about that, but that issue may or may not come up, I just wanted to address it. Uh, number five, number six, um, there are two members of the public who have, uh, who, who will um, request um, to give testimony as experts. Um, if a person is, number one, if they're, if they have a professional degree that is accepted, that's by the state of New Jersey, it's in good standing on an issue, um, that's before the board, you, you pretty much have to accept them as an expert, and that, they might be the best expert, and I didn't mean to be facetious. If they're an expert and with a degree and with a certification and it is in good standing, they're an expert. One is a traffic engineer, and they have a degree and good standing, that, that is, uh, pretty much you'll accept them. Another one is environmental. You would decide whether environmental is an issue, as I said, typically the way the board does performance standards is that you make it a condition of approval. If you would like to hear from them, that person will come up, so that, that is to be determined. Do that in force, I just wanted to let you know, one of the other issues that will be coming. Um, number six, um, here's a part of members of the public, you know, on time, as we did, as you did with um, cross-examination, the board may wish to uh, impose a reasonable time period on speaking. Uh, four or five, something like that, you may, ten minutes, you may not want to do any, but um, that is, as I read before, but in the New Jer, in the municipal manuse law, forty colon five D, dash ten. D and E both provide, um, D provides that uh, all testimony is subject to the discretion of the presiding officer and to reasonable limitations as to time and number of witnesses. E, technical rules of evidence shall not be applicable to the hearing, but the agency may exclude irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious evidence. If the board wanted my evidence, wanted my opinion or, or advice, you might want to have some limitation and see how it goes as you get in cross-examination. All the issues come up and the issues are being repeated, you may not want to extend that, if, if, if that hap, all, everybody wants to testify finishes in two hours and there may be two or three more questions you can revisit, but you don't have to take my advice, that, that would be a legitimate way. Still have some more issues. Um, issue, I think there's one more issue, and then that would be for now. Ms. Koemer, um, the attorney for the objectors emailed me today about, at, her, her position that Ms. Kelly, the Councilwoman Kelly suffers from a copper, which should be refused. Uh, I will read Ms. Koemer's email to me, which I agreed to do, and I'll provide my response and Ms. Kelly can take an advice, because I have had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Kelly, but I will, I will read both Ms. Koemer's statement and my advice to, to her, her decision on whether to refuse. Dear Board Counselor Brewer, as you are aware, I represent Morris Plains Citizens for Public Safety and Smart Development LLC who are objecting to the objectors to PB one dash twenty-four McDonald's USA LLC. This morning, I was sent a campaign video Facebook posted by Councilwoman and Planning Board Kathy Kelly on September twenty-one, twenty twenty-four that arises to a conflict of interest. In the attached video, Kelly states, quote, "I am Councilwoman Kathy Kelly. Social media is a great means of communication in twenty twenty-four. I want to take a moment to communicate certain facts regarding the pending McDonald's application. At the heart of the matter, I believe, is the issue of a drive-through. When ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-three was presented and discussed in the fall of twenty twenty-three, a drive-through in the B two zone was not an issue. Also, at that time, Friendly's was a single lot, as it was when it was open for business. The Acme property was standing vacant at one of the gateways to Morris Plains, and in order to facilitate and attract a tenant for the property, a drive-through in the B two zone was proposed. The primary focus was on Acme. I make this statement to clarify misinformation that is being published. No one wants to see the empty storefronts and lots in our borough, thank you," close quote. And then Ms. uh, Ms. Koemer then presents the argument. Under NJS forty colon fifty-five D dash twenty-three D, applicable to planning boards, provides that, quote, "No member of the board shall be permitted to act on any matter in which he has, either directly or indirectly, any personal or financial interest," close quote. "The decision as to whether a particular interest is sufficient to disqualify is a factual one and depends upon the circumstances of the particular case." Piscatelli versus Darfield and ZB A. Quote, "The question will always be whether the circumstances could reasonably be interpreted to show that conflicting interests had the likely capacity to tempt the official to depart from his sworn public duty," close quote. Piscatelli again, quoting Wyczikowski, spelled W Y Z Y K O W S K I, versus Rizas, quoting Vinitelli, V A N space I T A L L I D. I'm spelling this for the benefit of our core reporter, I'm trying to read it slowly. "The record must be sufficient to answer the question without, quote, ignoring the true circumstances faced by an office holder whose impartiality may reasonably come into question in the eyes of the public," close quote. Ms. Koemer goes on to state, "Here, the statement by Councilwoman Kelly on McDonald's application unquestionably displays her opinion of the case in front of the board and that she is unable to be seen as impartial in the eyes of the public. Therefore, I kindly request that Councilwoman Kelly recuse herself from today's proceedings. It should also be noted that, quote, "Where a board member participates in a proceeding from which he is later found to be disqualified, the proceeding is void in its entirety," close quote, and references Piscatelli once again in several other cases, quote, "The member should physically remove himself from the presence of the board and either leave the room or take his place among the general public or in the place reserved for the general public," close quote. Finally, Ms. Koemer says, "Attached are two screenshots of the post and a link to the video because the file was too large. Please confirm that Councilwoman Kelly will not be attending tonight's meeting, and any voted-on decisions, specifically the entrance of the Bayonne video, evidence be voided from the record. If you have any questions or issues, do not hesitate to contact me." I spoke with Ms. Koemer, I also reviewed the ball, um, I reviewed the video, um, which it was accurately quoted and what I read, that's the only thing that was stated. My tip, my uh, review of that is that it is a statement of what's at issue, there is not a statement, she doesn't have a personal interest, I spoke to her about this. She doesn't have a financial interest, it's whether, the argument here being made, has she prejudged this case? And I don't see anything from stating the issue that the ordinance was brought up because of the Acme and, and empty, empty lots to be a reading or to be fairly interpreted that she had prejudiced this case. Uh, I asked Ms. Kelly about it, my advice is that this is, this statement does not arise, and I don't think it comes close to something that would disqualify or based upon prejudicing case, and that would be my advice. It's always up to individual members, and not I or the board could force anybody, uh, but I've given my advice to Ms. Kelly, and I have figured all the issues I wanted to discuss before.
Do you want to speak to the fact that people cannot send a letter in? However, Ms. Koemer has sent a letter in, how that works?
Yeah, Ms. Koemer, as we said, oh, I said, said before. Yeah, Ms. Koemer, as we said, oh, I said, said before, Mr. Vitolo, when he states to testify, what he gives is not something that the board considers as true or false, it's arguments. That's what attorneys do, they present a case, but they present it through witnesses. The same with Ms. Koemer. She's not under oath, she's not presenting facts that the board would consider she, she, um, presents arguments and reasons for that she's asking the board to decide one way or another, which is why we adjusted the typical procedure and she didn't have to appear. She asked that her arguments in her closing statement be read into the record. That's what's there.
Okay. So now we're going to address the...
No, I can, I can, I'm not even going to.
Okay. Now we're going to address the, uh, people that are from the public, but want to be...
And I think that there, since there are two members that have, and, and actually first to the applicant here, are you finished currently with presenting testimony?
Yeah, we, we, as we said, uh, previously, we are finished with our case in chief. I would ask that any member of the public who stands before the board, um, and wants to be recognized as an expert, that we would like the ability to both question the qualifications and then to cross-examine that witness.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it?
I would, if the board want to take my advice, I think there are two witnesses. One, um, has a traffic engineering background, that's specifically raised by, by behalf of the presented witness that was a traffic engineer, and I think that's an easy one, that person go first. The second one's environmental, the board may consider and may decide they would like to hear from them. Both individuals, I've spoken, it was completely bound, indicated that they would need twenty minutes or less. Um, that's, that would be our recommendation, if you're experts. Then Ms. Koemer's statement, and her attorney is here, who typically has one, and then members of the public, if the board would, so, would like to proceed in that.
And, and I would, for my closing, I would like to reserve until after the public comments. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Amorosa?
If you raise your hand, that's one, if you're among the speakers, James, another last. Work on my phone, listen up.
Joseph Amorosa, A-M-O-R-O-S-A.
Do you swear or test, do you swear or, um, testify in this court this evening? What is a court?
Yes, I do.
Please give the board your benefit of your education, your parents, and any qualifications.
Uh, I received a Bachelor of Engineering degree in civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology. I hold an active license as a professional engineer in New Jersey, uh, license number five-one-three-nine-five-hundred. Uh, I also hold an active certification as a professional traffic operations engineer as issued by the Transportation Professional Certification Board, number thirty-eight-hundred.
Have you looked before any other boards or councils?
I have not.
Good.
Okay.
I would like to board here this witness on his qualifications.
That's, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, so, Mr., um, Mr. Amorosa, um, who is your employer?
Stantec Consulting.
Okay, and Stantec Consulting, um, they represent the DOT, is that correct?
Correct.
And this project is located on the State Road, correct?
Correct.
Under DOT jurisdictional?
Correct.
Okay, so I assume that you raised this issue with your current employer, correct?
Correct.
And what did they say?
To go ahead.
Okay, do you have in writing anything from your client that they don't see a conflict of interest in you providing testimony at first to the DOT in this application?
No, I do not.
How long did you take to prepare this, uh, this case?
Um, I, I think right now it's just qualifications. And on what, tell the board what to do.
You're right, Mr. Brewer.
Person who has a license that typically accepts that.
No, I just had a, I just had a question on, um, when Mr. Amorosa decided that he was going to be an expert in this case?
Couple of months ago.
Okay, and you disclosed that a few minutes before the meeting? Today?
This was the first chance for the public to provide expert testimony.
No, I, that's not my question. You prepared for months to present this testimony, but I only found out about it a few minutes ago. Why?
I didn't, I didn't know I had to ask your permission.
You didn't, I didn't, I didn't tell you. You like, you like the clap? Admirable quality there.
I think, please, just...
Can you re-answer the question, Mr. Amorosa?
I think we've reached the level of the qualifications. More than, how would you give you a, a, this is very ripe for cross, not official, for it.
Sure, I'll hold it, I'll hold it. Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
I have any comments or questions from the board to accept them?
Just, uh, with your, uh, engineering license, what's your area of expertise and what do you do at the consulting firm?
My area of expertise is traffic and transportation engineering. My professional experience covers planning, design, and implementation of transportation infrastructure projects.
And have you done work in Morris County?
Yes, fifteen years ago.
And where was that?
Madison.
What kind of a project was it?
A collective assessment of redevelopment site plans and a corridor study for Route one-twenty-four through Madison and Chatham and Chatham Township and Morris Township to review the validity of the proposed improvements by developers and/or needed infrastructure improvements as identified previously by Morris County.
And what, what are you currently working on, what's your project now?
A bridge replacement in Woodbridge Township, Middlesex County.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? It's a pleasure to watch you go into the wrong place. Hold on, David?
Hi.
opposed?
If you can receive.
Okay.
Can I plug in a laptop? Mr. Vitolo, can you refresh my memory what exhibit number this is?
I couldn't understand what you said.
Can you refresh my memory what exhibit number this is?
This was, appears to be, and I don't know where you got it, but it appears to be a page C-four from our application. So, we don't mark pages from our application typically. It's in the record and that's the sheet.
Is it, was it an exhibit?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
Is this the copy that we use? I mean, is this our copy? You're the one who's providing exhibits, so you tell me what it is. What, what is, where did you get it, et cetera? Because I don't know where you got it.
This is the applicant's site plan revision dated October seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, then that's good enough.
Good evening, Mr. Vitolo, Miss Chairwoman and the board. I would like to take this time to indicate aspects of the conditions proposed by the applicant that are unsafe, unacceptable, or unrealistic, or some combination of the three, with negative impacts on the public safety for the community and in regards to, uh, traffic operations and traffic safety. As shown here, um, the, uh, applicant's site plan is dated October seventh. Um, I will, uh, point to various themes as we go. But, uh, starting with my concerns about the proposed traffic operations, uh, the presented analysis and the conclusion of no significant degradation to traffic operate, operation conditions associated with the construction of the project. The traffic study begins with a flawed data collection method, with traffic volumes counted on only one weekday and one Saturday. Uh, no lead-up thought process is presented to indicate the validity of Wednesday, May first, as a typical weekday, and Saturday, May fourth, as a typical Saturday in terms of traffic patterns. Similarly, the applicant's choice of the hours when traffic volume data was collected is not backed up by any information to verify that those particular periods of time align with the peaks of traffic volumes on Speedway Avenue. Uh, additionally, no Sunday traffic volumes were collected, so no traffic analysis for a Sunday is available to, uh, review. In the same vein, in terms of a quality control verification, the traffic data was collected with no redundancy. No video is available of the same timeframe to allow for any form of independent verification of the data presented by the applicant. There is no way for an independent expert to verify that the numbers are legitimate and the board will simply take their word for it. Upon request by the borough's professional, a gap analysis was conducted by the applicant to provide an additional metric for traffic operations due to the existing congested operations on Speedway Avenue that are not typically captured by a traffic data collection effort. While this analysis provides a direct comparison of measured gaps to the, to the calculated demand, it does not paint an accurate picture of the potential traffic conditions during the data collection time period or for the traffic demand used for comparison. Overcapacity conditions along Speedway Avenue would result in the inaccurate timing of the gap between vehicles where acute traffic blocks the Dayton Road intersection and site driveway intersection. When a queue is present and traffic is fully stopped, did the data collection staff keep the clock running even if there is not enough space between vehicles to make a turn? The traffic report does not state in one way or the other. Additionally, the traffic report does not delve into the details of how the gap analysis considered the, uh, informal right-of-way procedures during congested traffic when one driver waves on a left-turning vehicle. For the analysis, the applicant points to the NJ DOT roadway design manual for the accepted gap criteria, but no explanation is provided how these values would change during peak period congestion and left-turning vehicles must maneuver through a two-stage decision. Additionally, the traffic report does not indicate how the analysis does or does not take credit for these hand-wave left turns, which present a safety concern for bicyclists and pedestrians blocked in terms of visibility by the queued traffic. As far as the analysis, analysis tool selected by the applicant, level of service criteria as described by the FHWA's Highway Capacity Manual and Synchro Twelve Traffic Operations Analysis Software, as indicated in the report, the applicant directly states that the HCM criteria assumes a random arrival for all movements, which may not be the case if an adjacent traffic signal is present that platoons vehicles. For that analysis at an unsignalized intersection, it is, it also states that the analysis calculations assume that the major street through movement is unimpeded. There, the applicant's preparation of the traffic analysis only calculated the average vehicle delay without incorporating the reduction in capacity by platoon vehicles from upstream, downstream, uh, traffic signals or queued traffic from downstream traffic signals during the peak, peak periods, both on weekday or weekend. As a benchmark, the unsignalized two-way stop-control intersection Highway Capacity Manual methodology cannot be applied since it explicitly states that the delay calculation does not consider this intermittent congestion caused by platoon vehicle traffic. The separate gap analysis does not capture the site-specific reality of what the actual vehicle turning, the vehicles turning from the intersection consider to be an acceptable gap. Uh, different analysis tool needs to be implemented to correctly calibrate for local driving behavior, fear of variables, and to incorporate the nature of the existing traffic stream, which this analysis tool could then output an average delay per vehicle for each movement to then compare to the HCM level service tables. A separate roadway segment level of service should also have been calculated to verify that the analysis of the unsignalized intersection is calculating realistic delay for the through movements on Speedway Avenue. Uh, additionally, uh, there are concerns with the traffic analysis as far as the calibration for peak hour factor, truck percentage, and approach grades. It appears that all of these factors are rounded in favor of calculating towards a more acceptable vehicle delay. This rounding does not allow for any variability or sensitivity to traffic patterns. As far as realistic operations of the site parking lot, we have heard at length about the concerns for circulation and drive-through queues and potential impacts, I'll keep my remarks brief. The acceptable drive-through queue length is directly dependent on the drive-through service rate, which is not self-enforcing by the site layout and is only dependent on the acceptable drive-through operation. The acceptable parking lot circulation is directly dependent on acceptable drive-through operation and is not self-enforcing by the site layout. While aspects of the ecosystem of the site are dependent upon driver compliance and driver awareness, the snowball effect of any drive-through queue that builds starts to generate a concerning list of conflicts. As calculated by the applicant, the ninety-fifth percentile queue during peak demand hours is only four vehicles. This would be split between the two lanes and includes the vehicle or vehicles at the ordering microphone, to their credit. But this calculation is dependent only on the ordering service rate and does not consider the downstream lag time at the payment or pickup windows. While they paint a very rosy picture for the peak time and off-peak drive-through operations, any spillback will be in direct conflict with pedestrians, bicyclists, and Speedway Avenue traffic in both directions. A southbound vehicle turning left into the site driveway will not have any forewarning of the potentially congested situation awaiting them and there is minimal distance for multiple decisions by that driver. A vehicle, uh, turning into the site driveway from Speedway Avenue will be encountering multiple decisions between pedestrians on both sides of the parking lot, vehicle maneuvers, and the potential for a queue in the drive-through, which then leads to the next decision of do they skip the drive-through? Where do they go? Where do they park? As far as traffic safety, there are several items I would also like to discuss. Some low-hanging fruit is that the applicant indicated that the traffic control devices, signs, stripes, pavement markings, as indicated on their site plan, are compliant with the FHWA's manual on uniform traffic control devices. I respectfully disagree. Yellow striping is not used for parking stalls. The yellow, drive-through, and directional arrow are not compliant. The lane use arrows and only and stop at the Dayton Road driveway and the site driveway, where vehicles need to stop before the sidewalk, are not compliant in terms of size. While this all may feel like a trivial concern, the newest revision of the MUTCD explicitly applies parking areas, including drive-aisles within those parking areas, that are either publicly or privately owned, and the purpose of the manual on uniform traffic control devices is to establish uniformity to the traffic control, which promotes safety and efficient operation. Moving on to truck maneuvers, that also was talked about at length. As far as the depiction of their vehicle swept paths as provided by the applicant for critical maneuvers in and out, there is no consideration for driver blind spots caused by the vehicle A-pillar, even for low-speed left-turn maneuvers. No additional analysis was provided to verify the safe movement for all left-turning vehicles, big, small, trucks, cars, what have you, in terms of potential conflicts with bicyclists and pedestrians. The relocation of the crosswalk on Speedwell Avenue further to the north places pedestrians within a blind spot for vehicles turning left out of Dayton Road. From the center line of Dayton Road to the edge of the proposed crosswalk is approximately 80 feet. Those drivers will, while turning left, will be initially making their decision to turn without knowing if a pedestrian is 80 feet away to their left. And when they pass the apex of their turn movement, the crosswalk will then come into view. In the short time of approximately five seconds, that driver is being asked to turn left from a stop, double-check that they actually had a safe gap from both the left and the right, and then make sure that they don't hit that crossing pedestrian that is now located 40 feet closer to them than the existing condition. This 40 feet, approximately two seconds of driving time for the existing condition, is enough time for those maneuvering drivers to safely come to a stop for crossing pedestrians. This issue is only exacerbated if a pedestrian is attempting to cross from east to west. The crosswalk relocation was not designed with sound engineering judgment and creates a new conflict point, decreasing safety for the crossing pedestrians and left-turning vehicles from Dayton Road. And as far as the vehicle turning from, vehicles turning right from the site driveway, those drivers attempting to make a right out will be staring at northbound traffic to their left, looking for acceptable gaps and looking for oncoming bicyclists, and looking for pedestrians coming from point south, and will not be aware of any pedestrian attempting to cross Speedwell Avenue immediately to the right. The rectangular rapid-flashing beacon, while an impressive piece of cutting-edge technology, does not provide any safety benefit for these noted conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. Delivery trucks and refuse trucks turning in and out of the site were not analyzed for these A-pillar blind spots. The safety impacts to bicyclists, pedestrians, and other vehicle traffic was not considered for realistic turn movements. The applicant depicts truck maneuvers where the truck is perfectly aligned parallel to the center line of Speedwell Avenue and will be able to deftly turn into the site driveway and out the Dayton Road driveway. No consideration was given to any further buffer space between the vehicle body, wheels, and curbs. The applicant has assured the board that the delivery vehicle can turn safely from Dayton Road onto Speedwell Avenue without driving over the curb or drainage inlet, but does not visually depict this maneuver on plan. Additionally, the existing traffic operations along Speedwell Avenue are not represented by the swept path truck turning plans as presented by the applicant. During congested traffic conditions, minimal gap is potentially available for trucks to turn during either weekday or weekend peak periods. My last concern deals with the proposed site triangles as measured by the applicant. The available clear viewing triangles were measured based upon the edge of a traveled way with no consideration for bicyclists on the roadway adjacent to the curb or pedestrians on the sidewalk. While the Ashdow Green Book does not explicitly call for a lengthier offset as measured from the major road, the proposed site triangle only considers for vehicles to have to creep forward over the sidewalk at the site driveway and over the crosswalk at the Dayton Road intersection in order to search out their acceptable gaps. Additional site triangle noncompliant issue, their monument sign is located approximately 20 feet by 20 feet off the property lines, while I believe the local code calls for a clear 25 by 25 triangle. All these operational and safety concerns add up to a proposed condition that does not provide for an acceptable traffic operations condition or traffic safety situation. No separate safety analysis was provided by the applicant to quantify the impacts of their proposed condition, good or bad. So are the qualitative issues presented in the traffic analysis and site plan in terms of either vehicle maneuvers or safe and efficient operations were not quantified in terms of either a crash rate or dollars and cents. This site is located adjacent to and nearby several lane uses producing a wide variety of vulnerable road users, including senior citizens, children, parents with their children, anyone and everyone going to the train station only a quarter mile away. And there is no inclusion of needs or limitations of these folks in the proposed site conditions. Thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you, Board.
Oh, I thought Mr. Leto had asked if he could...
Yes. I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and then I'm going to make an application to the Board. Mr. Amorosa, how many, well, let's start back with what I had asked before. You said that you had been preparing this for months, this analysis, correct?
Correct.
And that you disclosed that you were going to be testifying, testifying as an expert, today, correct?
Correct.
How many traffic impact studies have you personally prepared?
Twenty.
How many traffic impact studies have you personally prepared for a drive-through restaurant?
Zero.
How many traffic impact studies have you critiqued before a planning board relating to a drive-through restaurant?
As an expert hired by the planning board?
No, in any way, except for tonight, of course.
Critiqued for a municipal council on behalf of a planning board?
It's a much simpler question than you're making out to be. Have you ever critiqued a traffic impact study for a drive-through restaurant?
I believe so, yes.
Which one?
I do not recall.
Do you know the difference between "I don't know" and "I don't recall"?
Yes.
What is it?
"I don't know" is admitting a gap in knowledge, and "I do not recall" is a statement that the information is somewhere in your brain, but at the time of the questioning, you are not able to recall the specific knowledge.
Okay, so you did, you say that you did author critique of a restaurant with a drive-through, correct? You just can't remember the name?
Correct.
Was there more than one or one?
I don't know.
Mr. Amorosa, you are opposed to this project, correct?
My personal opinion should not be relevant to my professional expertise.
In fact, sir, you have been to the microphone several times over numerous nights objecting to this application, correct?
I don't see why that's relevant to my professional expertise.
Can you answer the question?
Can you repeat the question?
In fact, you have been to the microphone several times over numerous nights objecting to this application, correct?
Yes, I love being here.
Mr. Amorosa, do you live near this site?
Yes.
In fact, you live at 20 Dayton Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you have a personal interest in the outcome of this matter, correct?
The whole borough has a personal interest in this matter.
Mr. Amorosa, do you have a personal interest in the outcome of this matter?
I live within the 200-foot radius, yes.
Okay, I'll make my application. Board, this is not an expert witness. This gentleman has a personal interest in the outcome of this matter. He has an unwavable conflict, and he cannot serve as an expert witness. He's been at every meeting, but he withheld disclosing his analysis intentionally to sandbag applicant and delay these proceedings. If Mr. Amorosa was a real traffic engineer, as he says, who testifies at planning boards, he would know the rules of a planning board, that you cannot simply waltz into a hearing and dump 25 minutes of unsupported testimony onto a board. A real expert discloses his identity, he issues a report, allows the applicant and the Board time to review it. This is complete nonsense, and the Board should strike and disregard Mr. Amorosa's testimony.
Please, please, please. My take, sorry, I thought you disagreed with me. My take is that there was effective cross-examination that the Board can consider relative merit and the witnesses' motivation and testimony that nothing needs to be stricken. The Board has heard it. I think we should move on if the Board has questions or if the Board's professionals.
Any comments from the five professionals? Mr. Maltz?
Well, unfortunately, I got here halfway through his testimony.
Hey, that's not my problem.
One question I have is any traffic report, a document, being submitted in his behalf for the objectors that I can review?
No, nothing else was submitted, just testimony tonight.
Well, it's hard to address some of the issues you raised without having a hard copy, the same as I reviewed the applicant's traffic engineer's report in detail. As you know, I had a very extensive traffic review report with a follow-up dealing with traffic signs, striping, sign, you know, flashing beacons. The gap study was done because of my request to reflect actual operating conditions on the street rather than just theoretical random arrivals on the roadway. Apparently, some of that was objected to by Mr. Amorosa, but there was nothing put in writing for me to review. So I stand by my previous reviews. I think that the applicant's traffic expert should respond. He's heard everything that was here tonight. One question I do have. You mentioned for a vehicle turning out of Dayton, making a left turn, and you questioned the location of the relocated crosswalk. You said that's about two seconds in time. Well, two seconds in time to go about 80 feet, is the vehicle be operating, do you want to say something?
The relocated crosswalk is 40 feet.
Forty feet. Okay. That would be, so you're saying that's about two seconds in time. Does that reflect the vehicle starting from zero miles per hour and accelerating into the Speedwell Avenue?
As I calculated, yes.
It does?
It's at the end of the turning movement, so they've almost accelerated it to approximately 20 miles an hour.
That's a very slow speed, isn't it? Considering that you do have prominent crosswalk as well as flashing beacons, the current state-of-the-art for pedestrian crossings, seeing more and more of these put up all over the state.
20 miles an hour can be considered low speed for certain traffic analysis scenarios. For a vehicle hitting a pedestrian, 20 miles an hour is not low speed to their hips or knees.
Well, and you have no written report to submit?
I have my written notes.
That's all I can address at this time.
I have a question. I have a question for Mr. Maltz. Mr. Amorosa said that all we had to do was to rely on the applicant's testimony. Have you reviewed their traffic plan?
Yes, I have. It's in my report.
And what was your conclusion of it? Did you agree with it or disagree?
I agreed with it. I had numerous comments in my first report, which they responded to, and I noted my agreement or disagreement in my second report. Largely, they complied with the comments on signage and striping, pedestrian crossings, the beacons on the pedestrian crossing signs, advanced pedestrian crossing signs, and apparently, and I requested that they met with the state I acquired as to whether they brought these issues up with the state, and they said they did, and that the state was apparently acceptable to what was being proposed.
Mr. Amorosa, I have a question for you. Just, I didn't hear it maybe from Mr. Maltz as well. What is your, what's your reference material that you used?
The Highway Capacity Manual, as published by the Federal Highway Administration, describes the calculation method and comparison criteria for unsignalized two-way stop-controlled traffic operations analysis. It's the industry standard for uninterrupted flow on your major street. The FHWA also publishes the manual on uniform traffic control devices, as I said, signs, stripes, uniform standard. They refer to the Ashdow Green Book, so that's the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials. Policy on geometric design for roadways establishes geometric design standards for roadways, including site triangle criteria for a stop-controlled intersection.
Are there different volumes of these manuals or books that you use?
Yes, I refer to the most recent version for each, as did the applicant.
And what is that?
The most recent MUTCD was published last December 2023, but became New Jersey law in early 2024. The most recent version of the Ashdow Green Book was published in 2018, as far as I remember off the top of my head. The Highway Capacity Manual, I believe it's the sixth edition, is a couple of years old, maybe 2019 it was published.
Mr. Maltz, are you familiar with these manuals that he's...
Yes, I have all of them, I have all of them. In fact, I used to teach highway engineering, a course, at the New Jersey DOT, on behalf of the New Jersey Institute of Technology, for whom I served as an adjunct on the faculty.
Did you use the same manuals in your analysis?
I referenced the same documents, the gap study, I clarified with Mr. Paragoy as to what I wanted, which comes right out of the Highway Capacity Manual, that was done, from what I understand, according to proper procedure, but we were talking about the same documents.
What's the discrepancy here?
Well, I didn't hear all the testimony, so I don't know what came in the first half hour. Oh, what was it? I'm sorry, it was about five minutes before I got here? I don't know all the specifics of, I haven't had a chance to review what he's referring to in the various documents. I've heard him talk about the gap analysis, he has a question as to specifically how they perform the gap analysis. I spoke to Mr. Paragoy about it, but Mr. Paragoy may want to get up and respond to Chris Ambrose's comments on exactly where they started and stopped counting the gaps, to make sure, so apparently there was some question, is there any backup from Dayton on Speedwell, which would break up the measured gap? My understanding is if any car or pedestrian breaks up the being measured gap, that's when you stop measuring the gap. So I don't understand the relevance of what Mr. Amorosa's saying. I think it should be addressed really by Mr. Paragoy as to exactly what procedures they used out there to do the measurements.
Mr. Paragoy, if he would like to question the witness?
I don't think so, I mean, I think I'll take a couple-minute break, we'll talk amongst my team about it, but no judge in this state is going to allow this guy to be qualified as an expert who lives on the same street, so I'm almost tempted not to, but I need, give me two minutes with my team, if you could, so I can discuss it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, it'll take two minutes.
It's always good, every day.
Check one-two, one-two, check, check.
You hear it? No radio, no.
All right, I got Sue's mic though?
Which one?
Sue's mic.
That's twelve?
Check, 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 check.
Yeah, I'm fine.
So it should be on twelve?
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, so we are going to rely on the hours and hours of testimony from Mr. Paragoy, the back-and-forth between Mr. Paragoy and Mr. Maltz, the hours of questions from the public and the board questions, and so, no, we're not going to call Mr. Paragoy back at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that it's probably up to the board, but I think that we will all agree that we will not ask him, you know, not just, not, what do I want to say? His testimony, we'll leave his testimony and we'll let each member of the board decide whether or not they should consider it as part of the, as part of the record, based on what he had to say and based on what Mr. Batola had to say and Mr. Maltz. So it's up to each member of the board whether or not we want to consider what Mr. Amorosa had to say. Okay?
I have one more question, Sue.
Pardon me?
I have one more question.
Yeah, sure.
Just, am I right, you brought up about the striping or the arrows colored, and I thought, did you guys say that the, they'd be outlined in black also for added, so that you could see the lines? Thought that was brought up in testimony that we'd be able to paint. Well, maybe if not, we think we could outline the arrows.
Happy to do that, yes.
So the arrows, whatever markings are on a pavement, on a concrete, they would be outlined in a?
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Next witness, Mr. Battalies.
Thank you.
It's up to you to decide whether or not you're going to consider this.
Just in my own head?
In your own head, yep.
I would just like to say one thing, if I can.
Absolutely.
Mr. Amorosa, where'd you go? I just want to thank you for your testimony, because whether it's utilized by any of the board members, it was very helpful to me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
We'll be square men and then ask, what are we testifying to, and the board can then decide. Please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Tom Battalies, B-A-T-T-A-G-L-I-E-S-T.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you'll give this evening before this board? It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Could you please to give the board a summary of your qualifications, education, and knowledge on the issue on which you are seeking to testify?
Sure. Thank you, good evening, board, my name is Tom Battalies, as I said, I'm a resident of Morris Plains, but also have deep expertise in environmental chemistry, environmental impact assessment, environmental health and safety management. I'm going to provide testimony on the basis of my expertise, which is as follows. With education, I have a bachelor's in environmental chemistry from Rutgers University, an MBA from Wyden University with associated work in the field of environmental management, and a master's in energy and environmental policy with a concentration in sustainable development from the University of Delaware. I have more than 25 years' working experience with an industry across multiple sectors, organizations, and through entire value chains, including the agri-food value chain to retail and the consumer, acting both in internal management roles as well as for a few years as an external consultant. The focus of my presentation tonight will be on key environmental performance areas of noise, odors, and air pollution. I have worked on various industry new site development projects and have led environmental health and safety management programs and compliance programs that span the breadth of these topics in multiple states in the U.S., including New Jersey, as well as with international activities. Finally, I want to remind the board that I was previously sworn in by the Morris Plains Planning Board and accepted for expert environmental health and safety testimony related to the Mon Development Project on June 26, 2018.
Well, Mr. Batola, do you have any, any questions?
Mr. Battalies, is it?
Battalies.
Battalies, where do you live?
In Morris Plains, as I said.
Which street?
Utler Road, U-T-L-E-R.
How far from the site is that?
I would guess about three-quarters of a mile to a mile.
Okay, and as with Mr. Amorosa, you have testified previously, correct, in this case?
I have asked questions to your testimony and your expert's testimony.
And you're opposed to this application, correct?
I'm opposed to this application, yes.
And you have a personal interest in it because you are a resident in close proximity to the site, correct?
That's correct, but I would see it no different as to you and your expert's interests from you representing McDonald's.
Not what I asked you, I said, do you have a personal interest in the case?
And I respond as do you.
Be nice to be answered the question, I mean, is it yes or no?
I said yes.
Okay, thank you. You think I live next to the site?
I think you have an interest in this application.
I don't have a personal interest in this case, I don't live near the site.
Stop commenting on the question.
I would make the same, and sir, let me go to his qualification, how many, how many times have you testified as an expert?
Just once, I mentioned that in front of this board in 2018.
Okay, so you've never been qualified as an expert before any other board in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Not in terms of the planning board, but I've been qualified as an expert across different industry groups, different industry associations, both domestically and internationally.
How about before a zoning board, have you ever been qualified before a zoning board to provide expert testimony related to environmental issues?
As I said, only before this planning board during 2018.
Okay, and in that case, you were retained by one of the parties, or did you just testify as a resident? Okay, and how many reports related to environmental conditions on site plans have you prepared?
I've been involved with many dozens of site plans across the U.S. and internationally over my career.
How many reports have you prepared relating to environmental conditions on a site plan in New Jersey?
Where is New Jersey? I would say two to three.
In your whole career?
Yes.
How many years have you been working in this field?
More than 25.
Okay, so it would be fair to say or not that you are not a practicing expert witness, correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, yeah, well, it would be fair to say that you're not a practicing expert witnesses, expert witness before planning and zoning boards in New Jersey, correct?
I don't know what the definition is, but I gave you my background and my professional experience, I feel I have justified my qualifications quite well over my career and in front of this board in 2018.
What's the scope of your testimony?
The scope is on the issue of noise, odors, and air pollution as related to the performance standards. You've already acknowledged, or at least Mr. Brewer has acknowledged, the situation with the performance standards, and I intend to give additional background that I feel is warranted for the board to understand and be able to properly review the application in terms of the approval vote.
And when did you submit your report?
I'm about to give my report tonight.
Okay, when did you submit your written report?
My first report is my testimony that I will give tonight.
Okay, so you never submitted a written report, correct?
That's correct.
As with, as with the other witness, this witness has a personal interest in the outcome of this matter, he is a neighbor, he lives in Morris Plains, I mean, I just at the break, I looked up the case log, you cannot have people with personal interest in matters serving as expert witnesses, that is, that is testimony, expert testimony 101. So we object to this witness testifying as an expert, he could certainly free to make comments on the application during the public comment session, he could talk and talk all he wants, but he certainly is not qualified to give testimony tonight, he has an unwavable conflict of interest, and that's, that's my submission, my manager.
I would assume that the board would.
Tom, could you speak to this mic, please, closer to me? Thank you.
Mr. Bryan and Ms. Lahedy, do you have any comments on his expertise?
I don't have enough information related to judgment on that.
Any board members have any comments?
I mean, I don't know how technical he's going to get, but we have nothing to look at either, but.
Hi, hi. Here we now.
That's good.
I, I do have slides that, like I, that was already stated, should take me about 20 minutes to go through, and I prepared it in a manner that should be understandable to non-experts as well.
So, so you're, you're going to have exhibits?
It's a present, a PowerPoint presentation, I have a copy that I can also submit as an exhibit.
How does the board feel?
I'd like to hear Mr. Brewer's advice to the board.
Probably three, two comments. One, there's probably enough in his education and experience that if the board believed that noise or pollution were an issue in its determination, you could, if you chose, listen to him as an expert. I think this goes back to one of the issues I brought up before, so you have to decide. Typically, the way the board has dealt with performance standards is, it's taking one of the choices in your, in your ordinance, said, prior to or as a condition of the approval of any application. So you can either hear testimony about the performance standards, or you can do as you have normally done, that in the if you so chose to vote, that a condition of approval would be that the applicant must meet all of the performance standards set forth in the ordinance on, as I said, air pollution, smoke, odors, waste, noise, vibration, temperature, fire, those things. That's what the board's done, so effectively, if the board is, is going to have that be confirmed as a condition of approval, it's not really an issue, and I'm not sure the relevance. If the board chooses to hear it, because it could hear testimony before, you could choose to, it's in your discretion, the way the board has typically handled these cases, it's not really an issue in this case, but that's up to the board to decide. Hate to, I hate, I usually have stronger opinions, this one is really a toss-up to you, whether or not you want to make it a relevant.
Can I give a comment here, comment there, or?
No, this is, this is my advice to the board, and that's, we're not giving take at this point, this is the board's.
Any comments from the board?
I would love to hear his testimony.
I have a question, Andy, what's the difference between, I understand the difference, but expert testimony versus he, him just giving? he, him just giving opinion as part of public comment? Do you have an opinion about that, part of it?
Functionally, the, the testimony that is to be given by witnesses is supposed to be evidence of facts, knowledge in their own, that can be, and a fact is something that is a positive or negative, it can be true or false. An expert is allowed to give an opinion based upon their knowledge and expertise if the board thinks that their knowledge and expertise would be useful on a fact that has to be determined, if you want to determine, so in a case, if there was an issue on whether the amount of smoke would be correctly filtered out, you could listen to testimony on someone that knows the density of the carbon fibers that go into a scrubber, or something along those lines, and an opinion on whether or not that would be sufficient. That, so the person can give an opinion about it, and I don't think that'll be enough in the future or not. People, the, the normal witnesses can say, I live X, I see cars a lot, I have traveled on a, you know, in, in a, driven in a place where there are nine-by-eighteenth law, so they can say something from their experiences that is a yes or no. An opinion is something that is not really provable, it is a prediction on what a future condition will be, good or not, if you really want to guess. And as I said, the board had, the board could decide either way, because as I said, performance standards is what they're talking about, noise, pollution, those things, they are all regulated other places, and the, the ordinance specifically gives you a choice, either prior to or as a condition of approval, you can require satisfaction of it. So if, as I said, that's how the board has done it, typically, they have required that an applicant for any of the industries in which there are performance standards to satisfy the, you know, the local testing officials, whoever does the noise testing, the other things, for that to be established as you often do, but it can be done either way, as I said, prior to or as a condition of the approval, it can be done either way. Up until now?
I, I think personally that performance standards will cover it, but I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Mayor?
Sure.
Yes?
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
Well, I think it's quite evident that the residents still don't feel that our experts or the board have addressed their issues. There's a unique, a uniqueness about this application, nobody seems to want to acknowledge, yes, it's a restaurant, yes, it's a drive-through, and we permitted those things, but it's always in the details that matters. It's a restaurant that nobody is used to, they can't give us an exact example that would comply with our town. It's a drive-through, sixty or seventy percent of it is going to be a drive-through, there's a traffic situation that hasn't really been answered or addressed. The proximity to you to the school, the safety, and the mechanics of the, what's gonna happen if kids choose to use this as a hangout or go to use the facility, is the traffic condition gonna be advantageous for safety? I get it.
Mr. Battalies is going to be speaking. Mr. Battalies is going to be speaking on environmental issues.
I'm just gonna plug in the line.
And further.
If there is an exhibit, there has to be one that is hard copied, marked for the board, and the applicant should have one too, so if all you have is a, one hard copy, the applicant's attorney should have that during this presentation, so he can address it to the best that he can.
I just, I just have to make the record, we object to this presentation that was never disclosed prior to this meeting, and we have no clue what he's gonna put up on the screen. That's why we do have disclosure, so that the board and the opposing attorney knows what the heck is getting disclosed. And, and further, just one last thing for the record, Mr. Battalies was here, I think every single meeting, he's been here throughout the whole process, and like Mr. Amorosa, he waited till today to disclose that he's giving testimony and never showed anyone what he's putting up on the screen.
So I, I would refer, I think that it's in the record. Okay.
Yes, please, mark, put your name, your name, and cash, what?
Oh, six.
And the date. Oh, six, and his name and the date. Petola will have a copy of that one secured for you, and then that will be referred to down in the meeting, so you'll have more to talk.
So thanks for the opportunity to present some additional insights that I think are pertinent to the board to understand in order to make a proper vote, whether you're approving or not approving this application. So I just want to start out with a, a very brief recap of the environmental timeline of how this application came together. So on the left-hand side of the screen, you see the, the basic, yeah, this is showing the checklist that was submitted back in June by the applicant, and on the right-hand side is just a snip of, to point your attention to number 58, which is the environmental impact statement that I've highlighted there, letter C, 58C, and you see that a waiver was requested with the reason of a previously developed site. And what I want to point out is that there seems to have been a misunderstanding within the planning board, actually, in terms of what an environmental impact statement is, and I put the definition here because you can see that the town engineer actually pointed out in his report in June, or his letter, and I took a snip there, that's what, at the top there, regards to number 58, it says waiver requested and not recommended, data regarding underground storage tanks and phase-one assessment should be provided. So number 58 actually refers to an environmental impact statement, and what the applicant provided was a phase-one environmental site assessment, or ESA, not EIS. During the August 19th Planning Board meeting, there was testimony from the engineer, very brief testimony, that there were really no concerns because it was an existing site, there were no concerns related to the environment, and you can see the definitions there, the environmental impact statement is focused on the proposed development, while the ESA or the phase-one report is focused on existing environmental conditions of the site, two completely different things. And so just point that out as a gap, that technically the waiver was granted for the environmental impact statement, that item number 58 by the board, when they voted to approve completeness, but there was not appropriate details that were actually provided to the board from the applicant, nor reviewed by the, the planning board engineer on item number 58. At the same time, it also appears to have been a variance that was possibly required, and this is the, the issue that I'm gonna focus on for the rest of the testimony. It was already indicated that the applicant, as Mr. Brewer rightly pointed out, has the, the right to approve performance standards prior to the application being approved or as a condition of approval, and you can see that the town engineer basically called that out, that says variance is required but not requested back in June, and it says that certain performance standards be satisfied relative, relative to noise and odor, I'm also gonna focus on air pollution as part of that same zoning ordinance, or land use ordinance. There was no data provided and variance possibly required, and you can see that that was reiterated in the town engineer's August 2nd and September 5th letters as follow-up, as well as from the town planner's letter that, with the application review, that the applicant must demonstrate compliance. Additionally, there was a resident that actually asked the question in, in the August 19th meeting, as to whether it's appropriate to have an environmental impact waiver, because they had concerns around the air pollution associated with the drive-through being cited very close to the residence, and the response was that this issue would be addressed during the forthcoming testimony. So this is, there's, you know, more elements to this performance standard ordinance here, but I highlight in yellow basically the, the key aspects that, as we just discussed, prior to or as a condition of the approval of any application, the applicant shall supply evidence satisfactory to the approving board, and this may include required tests from government agencies or recognized testing laboratories. So the three aspects, there are additional aspects here, as I believe it was Mr. Brewer that was just reading, related to waste and, and water and, and other issues, but I, I don't feel that those are pertinent to this application, so the three that do appear to be pertinent are noise, odors, and air pollution. The applicant themselves already pointed out the New Jersey Administrative Code requirements that show it over a 24-hour day, you have two separate standards there, seven, between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., so essentially the, the daytime and, and earlier evening hours, you have a 65 decibel threshold for, for any noise, and the overnight hours of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., it's a lower threshold set at 50 decibels. On odors, the standard is that there shall be no emission of odorous matter in such quantities as to be readily detectable without instruments at the property line from which they are emitted. And on air pollution, you can see the language there, there's two elements to it, one is the barrow element that says no substance shall be emitted into the atmosphere in quantities which are injurious to human, plant, or animal life or property, or which interfere unreasonably with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property anywhere in the barrow. And then it also refers to the New Jersey Administrative Code, and, and then defaults to whichever is more stringent, which I would say that the broad nature of the barrow ordinance that I put there in italics and blue, that say which interfere unreasonably with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property anywhere in the barrow is more stringent than the New, New Jersey Administrative Code, which gets into specific values of pollution and so forth. So keep that in mind with the fact that there are residents immediately next to this planned operation. So I just want to look very briefly at each of those three elements, and first on noise, the applicant's civil engineer provided noise testimony, but did not appear to be a noise expert, at least that was not stated in, in the introduction. And he gave testimony that they would have less than 20 decibels at a property, property line, in terms of noise level when questioned about the, the drive-through speaker system. And I'm pretty confident to guess that mostly everybody in this room has no idea what 20 decibels means, so I tried to put that in human terms. You can find different, similar charts like this, but I defaulted to the Occupational Safety Health Administration that regulates safety and health for, you know, from a federal perspective for the United States and across the states, and you see the scale here of zero to 140 of different types of noise that you could then, you know, put in human terms, like I said, 20 decibels is amazingly a silent study room. So no testimony was provided on the truck noise levels, and there was no noise report, no official noise report with numbers or data that was submitted to prove that the, the performance standards could be met. And without a proper noise expert report, it seems highly questionable, if not impossible, that the proposed drive-through restaurant will achieve 20 decibels, let alone less than 20 decibels, as was testified when you consider speaker noise, truck, traffic, and HVAC systems. Moving on to odors, the same testimony on September 16th from the applicant engineer gave testimony to a kind of a state-of-the-art, as was phrased, two-phase scrubber system that will remove 90% of the grease aerosols, but once again, there was no data submitted to support the odor performance standards, such as field olfactometry from similar operations to show the types of odors that might be detectable at the property line. Most importantly, 90%, 90% sounds oppressive, but the big question I have is 90% of what? There is no numbers submitted in terms of what the concentrations of aerosols from the cooking that would be emitted, and, and therefore what the 10% remaining concentrations are, because that could in fact present a harmful situation to the, the surrounding community in terms of health and environment. Other possible odors from delivery and the grease truck, grease removal truck, the vacuum truck that they would most likely use to, to suck out the grease from the grease trap, as well as the drive-through emissions, were not discussed at all. So again, odors, like noise, lacking in terms of evidence. Moving on to air pollution, once again, no evidence provided in terms of the performance standards. This is a, I would say, an emerging topic, and it's important for the board to consider the type of research here that is, is being published in the past few years, that is showing the issues around drive-through, and this is why some cities are now banning drive-throughs altogether in terms of allowing them within, you know, a city, larger cities, let alone small boroughs like Morris Plains. And I put here two, two studies, one is from the U.K., one is from the U.S., the top one from the U.K. looked at 10 different restaurant drive-throughs from McDonald's, the Burkin KFC, understanding that these are, you know, may or may not be the equivalent operations, which I'm sure I'll get a question on based on what, what happened with the Bayonne situation there, but it is common practice in environmental, the environmental area to look at similar operations, let's say, and in this case, it wasn't just around the era that we were talking about, that the U.K. air pollution standards were violated in many of these situations by multiple times, when they looked at the, the kind of the very local air pollution associated with the drive-through traffic. The second study is from the U.S., very recently following the COVID-19, drive-throughs that were set up for the, the COVID-19 testing that we are all familiar with, and essentially, they discovered that when they assessed the pollution in the immediate surrounding area, they found hyper-local hotspots of pollution caused by the exhaust of the idling traffic in that drive-through. It was especially prevalent, and this was also my concern with the drive-through here, considering how close it is with the immediate residents, that in the summertime, you basically get what are known as atmospheric conversions, simplistically, it's when the, the air is kept lower, so that's when you have, you know, issues that we all see with summer smog from, from vehicle exhaust and other pollution, and so this was, you know, an extra note that during the summer heat, atmospheric conversions, the pollution was at a much higher rate as well in the, in the already hotspots that they had identified. It's an uncontested fact that vehicle exhaust pollution in general presents environmental health risks. I, you, you could, you know, look at journals and come up with hundreds and thousands of different articles that, that have been peer-reviewed that go in this direction. The main pollution that comes off of a vehicle exhaust, including light-duty vehicles, are volatile organic compounds, fine particulate matter, nitrogen oxides and carbon monoxide emissions, and you see that the health and environmental risks that are associated with such pollution on the health side, cardiovascular, respiratory diseases, cancers, and increased mortality rates associated with such diseases, and environmental risks being smog, summer smog, basically acid raining, and damage to surrounding ecosystems. When we consider the drive-through situation that we're talking about here, the, the idling and start-and-stop traffic patterns that are associated with, with the drive-through will result in higher emissions, that's also a well-proven fact. And a, a focus study also showed that greater drive-through lanes, you know, maybe not surprisingly, results in greater emissions. So here, we're talking about a multi-lane drive-through, two, two lanes, basically, the more lanes you have, the more cars that can be squeezed through and idling simultaneously, and, and that results in, in greater emissions. And when I asked the questions around the, whether there were concerns around air pollution to the expert from the McDonald's side, the answer that I got was that it was a quote-unquote "at most temporary" problem, and electric vehicles will solve that. But New Jersey only has about 2% of EV market. But New Jersey only has about two percent of EV, uh, market share, and I can tell you that is not growing as fast as expected, so this will be years before that problem is, uh, completely gone. So because the performance standards, uh, so far we haven't been able to have evidence that prove, uh, that conformance will be possible, uh, with these performance standards on noise, odor, and air pollution, um, this brings into concern the following aspects of the master plan. Um, and essentially, um, going back to the nineteen seventy-five and then the two thousand master plan and straight through the reexamination in twenty eighteen, you have goal number eight, which is focused on providing, uh, protection of the environment through all reasonable measures for minimizing the impact of pollution, and I would suggest that the board consider that because a pretty simple measure here for minimizing this type of pollution is not to have a drive-through and ask people to park their car, turn off their car, and get out and go in and pick up their food. And then the community visions, uh, statement is also, uh, a concern without conformance to these standards, um, because of the focus on a healthy and sustainable, uh, Morris Plains. And finally, uh, the drive-through proposal also contradicts the Morris Plains Community Energy Plan that was endorsed by the Morris Plains Council earlier this year. This was developed with New Jersey Port of Public Utilities Grant. Um, the CEP has goals to reduce energy consumption both from stationary or building and mobile, um, sources or vehicles, uh, and, and the associated greenhouse gases. Um, the analysis in the CEP showed that more than fifty percent of Morris Plains greenhouse gases come from vehicle exhaust, and I just did a quick, uh, calculation there to show that the proposed drive-through based on the number of cars, um, with a seventy percent drive-through, uh, rate, eight hundred transactions coming in, uh, per day, um, will see, um, more than a hundred and forty thousand pounds of carbon dioxide addition to Morris Plains carbon footprint, which is counterintuitive, of course, to the, uh, the goals of the Community Energy Plan. So to summarize the conclusions, um, from all this, uh, basically, the, the unusual drive-through scenario, I'll just read them, the unusual drive-through scenario that is proposed with a high number of cars and large stacking capacity right next to residences and across the street from the school raises legitimate concerns that the board must clearly assess. The applicant did not provide sufficient evidence that the proposed operation would uphold the Morris Plains land development performance standards, uh, and I would add, since this was already addressed, that they do have the right to, um, to, to approve, you know, you guys have the right to approve this as a condition, um, that just because it's approved, um, that could open up a can of worms, because if you go back to noise, this was already testified by the planner, if the noise standards are exceeded, then you're talking about putting up some kind of noise, uh, wall, you know, uh, right neck, right in between the, the, the residents next door, which I think would obviously be a problem, and then I will tell you that the issues of, uh, noise, uh, sorry, of odors and, um, air pollution, particularly when it's related to mobile sources like this, um, and even the cooking, uh, can be, uh, kind of on and off type situations and hard to, uh, enforce because of that. So the proposed drive-through presents concerns of noise, odors, and pollution that have not been addressed to demonstrate that they don't negatively impact Morris Plains, particularly the environmental quality and health, health of the surrounding neighbors on Dayton Road and other immediate residential streets, and present legitimate concerns for the goals of the Morris Plains Master Plan. Non-compliance with the performance standard requires a variance, which then requires the applicant to meet the negative criteria and prove that they are not substantially impairing the master plan and zoning ordinance and not substantially harming the public good. That's my testimony, and I'm sure there'll be some questions and so forth.
Tom, Battelies. Mr. Battelies, how many drive-throughs did you personally study in preparing your report?
Intentionally, I did not personally study any for the reason that was discussed last week, that other drive-throughs, uh, are not admissible, um, with what was raised. I did actually talk to New Jersey D E P and was intending to, uh, to take some, uh, air emissions with monitors they loaned out, and I was planning to do that from the Bayonne site that you guys referenced, but, uh, after that testimony last week, I saw that it didn't make any sense at all, so I default to these research studies as I think the burden of proof is on you guys to prove that, uh, that this is in conformance.
How many drive-throughs restaurants in Morris County have you ever studied?
I don't study drive-throughs, and I'm not studying drive-throughs for the reason I just gave.
How many drive-throughs in Morris County have you ever studied?
Zero.
Thank you. Miss, uh, did you agree with the testimony of Mr. Steck, and in particular, his testimony about the Bayonne McDonald's?
Can you remind me what point you're referencing?
If you don't remember, then it's not relevant. Did you agree generally with Mr. Steck's testimony?
I am not an expert on many of the aspects that he testified to, they didn't have to do for the most part with environmental concerns that I testified to tonight.
Okay, did you agree with anything that Mr. Steck testified about?
Um, so I thought that he had some good points that, again, I'm not the expert, but seemed to make sense.
Did you know that Mr. Steck was the planner who wrote the plan allowing that Bayonne McDonald's to be built?
I don't think that's relevant to my testimony, but I'll let...
I'm asking you if you knew that.
I did not.
Okay, would it change your opinion of Mr. Steck?
It would not have.
Okay. Sir, you must have testified in opposition to the Chick-fil-A and Rite Tim.
I did not.
Because you don't live down the street from it, right?
Because the Chick-fil-A is on a highway without immediate residents and a public school across the street.
Okay, so the pollution's okay there, but just not here?
Pollution, um, does, as, as you get further from the source, does become less, you know, more and more dispersed, so that's correct, and there's already pollution associated with the highway there. Again, it is not next to residents, uh, or public schools.
There's a lot of cars that, uh, queue for that Chick-fil-A, isn't there?
That's what I hear.
Yeah, many, many, many more that will queue here, sir, so, uh...
Again, it's in a completely different location, sir.
But you didn't, you didn't object to that application, correct?
It's in a completely different, um, s- situation, and I would suggest that this McDonald's would be perfect and where the wicker is, uh, is, uh, going to be knocked down upon the Rite Tim.
I assume that you've already submitted all of your backup that supports your conclusions from the presentation, correct?
Um, I have footnotes for any sources, any data that was, uh, cited, and I'm happy to, uh, if the board needs printouts of any studies that I referenced, I can, I have them on my computer and will happily provide a printout.
Okay, I'll ask you again, I assume you've already submitted all of your backup, correct?
My, I explained to you my testimony is there that I just handed you a copy.
Okay, it's, it's, you know, I'm asking you questions, and that's a yes or no? Did you submit the material or not?
The material is in front of you, sir.
The backup, did you submit the back?
What backup are you looking for?
Okay, then that answers the question, did you rely on?
I have citations of any data that is in that packet there.
Okay, but the physical backup, the reports, all that information that you purportedly reviewed to come to your conclusions, did you submit that material to the board? It's easy.
There is no other material that I submitted.
So you have no other backup, it's just this?
I'm not sure what backup you're looking for.
I, I, you're not listening. Is this the only? Is this the only?
That is the only document that I have at this moment, but there are citations there. If you need hard copies and don't have access to the internet, I'd be happy to print them for you.
Okay, I'll ask one, one last time, is this the only document?
That is the only document, sir.
Thank you. I, I would like to ask my, um, my civil engineer, I'd like to confer as I did before for a couple minutes with him, um, as to whether he has additional questions, again, this is the first time we're seeing this.
So it's ten minutes to nine. We've been here almost two hours, why don't we take a fifteen-minute break? Okay. Nine oh five.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
I tracked the farmer. Thanks for the help.
No worries.
I know. I appreciate it.
Pick crew, for the win.
I kept moving my phone. What is up, dude? Here, come on in, floor. That's about that, you know, hold it. A M station. Patrol.
I don't even like cars. I can't even see it. I can't do it. Yeah. Happy hour with the five sixteen. I'm always recording. You're all like, oh. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What? Yeah. 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 Oh. Yeah. 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 I'm sorry. Yeah. The one. The one. The one. Yeah. I know, we got it. I know. Yeah. 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 Why? Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I thought you retired. Oh, my God. Thank you, Whitney. Yeah. 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 I saw him. Yeah. 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 Hey, boys, walk. Yeah. Do it every night, man. Oh. Yeah. 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 All right. Yeah. 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 My God. Yeah. My God, I have. Oh, yeah. There's a lot of markets. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. No, I know.
I mean, this, that might be surprising.
Hey, I'm fine. I mean, Kevin, you work together for life. They tell people to get money. Uh, that's good. You guys did great work, you know, did great work. First name, what's that, my name? Mike. That's not my name, boy. You're good? Yeah.
Okay, so. Are we back on the record? Okay.
Yeah. We only, we have three more questions, just for this witness. Sir, do you understand the concept of a permitted use?
Yes.
Okay, and what do you understand that to be?
That it is, if it's in the zoning ordinance, it is a permitted use. However, until it's proven, you know, as I showed at the end of my testimony against, that you're requesting variances, so yes, it's a permitted use. The variances need to show that the positive criteria outweigh the negative criteria and don't go against the zoning ordinance or the master plan.
Okay, is a drive-through restaurant permitted on this property?
It is.
Okay. Did you, you didn't do any independent modeling of the equipment that McDonald's is proposing for this site, correct?
Honestly, I don't know the specifications. The only thing he testified to was that it was a two-phase scrubbing system that would remove ninety percent. I don't know who manufactured it or, you know, any of those details. But like I said, the thing that matters is the concentrations that are being emitted, not the system per se.
Okay, I'll ask that again.
Okay.
You did no independent modeling of the equipment that McDonald's is proposing, correct?
What do you mean by modeling?
You didn't independently analyze, test, or look at the equipment that McDonald's is proposing, correct?
No, I'm not sure how that would be possible if it's not constructed yet.
So the answer's no.
That's correct.
Okay. And you conducted no site-specific analysis regarding noise or odor, correct?
I believe that's where the testimony was going last week with Bayonne. That was stated that that was not admissible, so since this site is not constructed, no, it's impossible to do any testing.
So I'll ask it again.
No, I did not do any testing of the site.
Regarding those noise and odor.
Correct.
Okay. And sir, you have no qualifications as a planner, correct?
That's correct.
All right, that's all we offer. Thank you.
Any questions of our experts or professionals?
Yes, ma'am, chair. Is this mic turned up?
Right.
Yes. I have no questions for Mr. Battalies, but I have some comments on what he had to discuss with the board.
Okay.
First goes back to the completeness review and the matter of the EIS waiver. Just reminding, I want to remind everyone that the waiver is for administrative completeness with the, always with the stipulation that the, that it's not dispositive of all the issues that go with it, that those items could be raised in testimony as the matter proceeds, as the hearings proceed. And I believe that was, that was the case here. The applicant civil engineer went through all those issues and provided testimony about the various performance specifications, standards for the compliance ordinance. The other thing is, I indicated in my report at that time that there may be a variance required relative to performance standards. That, I said it may be because they, there might have been a case where the applicant said, "We are going to do something in excess of a standard." Then it would be a variance. That's not the case here, so there are no variances required for, for any of the performance standards. What really comes down to is what this board has done in past practice with, with performance standards.
Am I allowed to respond to any of these as he testified to?
One person, Tom.
Okay.
Okay.
As we go into performance standards, it's always been this board's practice to make it a condition of approval and that it would be demonstrated by tests and enforcement. That's how compliance is achieved here with these standards, is by enforcement and tests. And so I'm recommending here that that's, that we follow that same practice that's been in place for as long as I can remember. Regarding, you know, regarding noise and odor issues, you, it's all speculative at this point. Now, we can hear testimony from, from experts about what there may be. You can have ten experts and you can get ten, ten different opinions, as they say. You don't know what kind of truck is going to be, what kind of motor it has, where the exhaust is located, the refrigeration units, all those things, which is why we do the, the post-development tests for, for those things and, and before the issuance of a C.O. Now, that's, that's where I, where I think we should go again, and that's, those are my comments regarding the performance standards.
Thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions?
Can I respond to his comments somehow?
No, it's not a good thing. It's not.
Okay. So he gets less words.
Mr. Bezzle?
My question is really clarification, because I know nothing about decibels. So you said that their engineer had testified that McDonald's is only going to have twenty decibels of noise?
He testified, you can go back to the transcript to see the exact effect. I have it here if you want me to read it, but he testified that, that there would be less than twenty decibels, not twenty, but less than twenty at the property line. The property line, as he stated, was fifty feet in one direction or a hundred feet in the other, so fifty feet, yes, as silent as a, or better than as silent as a, as a quiet study line, is what he testified to. He only testified on the speaker system as well, that was all he commented about. And there was no report. I mean, I'm getting questions here about whether I've done testing on their equipment, but they submitted no report, and a certified noise report is the normal approach here by a certified noise expert, and he's not a noise expert. He's a civil engineer, with all due respect, and he only gave verbal testimony without any backup data.
So is your chart that you posted on the screen accurate as far as how decibels go? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that came from OSHA, so that's the federal, you know, agency that governs safety and health in this country.
So is there any way we can get clarification from McDonald's about the decibel level that may be coming out of here?
There was extensive testimony on the decibel levels, and nothing this witness said frankly puts cause act into question. You may, you may not believe it, but that's what our test, our expert testified to. So it's up to the board to judge the credibility of the witnesses and to make a judgment as to who they believe and who they're going to go with as far as these standards. So we're comfortable on the record that's been created already.
Any other members of the board have any questions? Okay. That's the conclusion of the application.
Thank you.
Of this question. Right. Right, so that's where we are.
There was a question from the room as to whether the community gets to cross-examine as we did with their witnesses.
No. No. Okay, so, so here's the way it's going to go. We're going to have, I guess it's one of the.
Ms. Coomer, the attorney for the group that appeared, was not able to appear. She, I don't know the name, she stated to me that she gave her statement to one of her clients who she represents, who would be reading, and I agree that's fine, that she wanted that so she wouldn't have to come in. Is that person here? Ma'am, you can, this is not your time, but you get, yeah, it's your time to come up. If you'd like, this is Ms. Coomer, you'll be reading her statement, and she sent me an email to make sure that you didn't write it, and I never thought she would have. She's going to speak, you're, you're done for now, I'm sure you'll make a back.
Because there'd be a difference.
The board is, please, we're done. The board has decided it doesn't need cross-examination from objectors. That, that's the whole point. There. Okay, thank you. It's Ms. Coomer, Ms. Coomer's client, you get to speak now, you get to read her statement.
First, I would like, is this okay? Can you hear me okay? Like this? Yes? Okay. My name is Lisa Schroeder, Ninety-seven Maple Avenue, but reading the statement of Heather Coomer, who represents the LLC. First, I would like to thank Planning Board Attorney Andrew Brewer for allowing my closing statement to be read into the record. Recently, I have been diagnosed with multiple sclerosis and painful relapses have disabled me to join you tonight in person. This closing statement being read into the record does not negate the reader to voice their own opinion during public comments. Second, the objections being stated have nothing to do with the dislike of McDonald's as a company or not wanting Big Macs in Morris Plains. The objection of application is based upon public health and general welfare. The applicant previously stated that this is a permitted use. The board can't deny this application. This is not only not the case, but that logic and opinion sets a dangerous precedent for Morris Plains. Just because a use is permitted, that does not mean it gets a free pass on all requirements by the municipal land use law, Morris Plain zoning code, and master plan. This application has not yet been approved by the Department of Transportation. According to the municipal land use law, for a C variance, the applicant's burden to prove that the benefits of granting these variances outweigh any substantial detriment to the public good, the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and that the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirement. The applicant's planner testified that the applicant, that the application meets A and G of the purposes of the municipal land use law. A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general wel- welfare. Paragraph G reads, "To provide a sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens." Do you think a two-lane drive-through fast-food restaurant on an undersized corner lot across the street from a middle school and surrounded by residential homes is an appropriate location? As stated by our planning expert, Peter Steck, yes, drive-through restaurants are permitted in the B-two zone, but this restaurant is too big for the property, or alternatively, the property is too small for the proposed restaurant. The tightness of the site forced the applicant into proposing zoning and design deficiencies that are not justified. The testimony you heard from our witness even showed that an essential variance under general requirements for non-residential off-street parking was not even considered. Section thirteen, colon, five point seven reads, "No part of any off-street parking areas shall extend into any required front yard more than the front yard setback requirement of the zone in which it is situated unless specifically permitted in the respective zone." Additionally, the applicant's planner did not review the applicable master plan document, only the 2018 master plan reexamination. The lack of information provided by the applicant and their inability to meet their burden is warranted for a denial. During our expert testimony and our presentation, instead of providing legal arguments and planning arguments that support an approval on their plan, the applicant's attorney focused on limiting the ability of the public to ask questions and trying to discredit our planning expert. Why did they rely upon these tactics? Because they do not have enough of a case to prove their burden to grant this approval with the variances. The applicant's planner relied upon utilizing the Chase Bank's drive-through that is down the street to show that it justifies having a two-lane drive-through, even though the Chase Bank is only open until five o'clock and McDonald's will stay open until eleven. They also have repeatedly said that the application in front of you meets the burden merely because it is part of the Chase Bank, even though it is a much larger lot, a less intense use, and hours of operation. Some of the biggest concerns are regarding traffic, loading spaces, parking, and meeting performance standards. You may think, well, if they do not keep their promise to meet these conditions when the zoning officer can issue a violation. However, in this case, what good is a zoning violation if a child from the middle school gets hit by a car while trying to get a Happy Meal? What good is a promise that an eighteen-wheeler drogue delivery truck will have no problem utilizing the parking without a loading space and will not cause any disturbance, only to find that it has caused significant harm and there is no way to remedy after the effect? Unfortunately, in this instance, the repercussions of an approval of this application would result in an immediate harm before a zoning violation can even be issued. Instead of hearing the concerns of residents and neighbors and children that this is not a suitable area for a two-lane drive-through fast-food restaurant and finding a different location in Morris Plains, McDonald's has decided to ignore the people of Morris Plains and move forward with the application. I urge the planning board members to hear your neighbors and their concerns. I urge McDonald's to reconsider their proposal and work with the residents to find a more suitable location that is safer and less intrusive than the current site. The current plan tries to put a square peg in a round hole. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration.
Um, now, I think it's now, it's time for the members of the public. Um, I think previously the board, um, I think it's, uh, because of the large number of people that want to speak. If it turns out only six or seven want to speak upon the recycle another time, but I think it's going to be initially when people tell them, there's gonna be four minutes, um, you'll be sworn and give your testimony, your statement, something, you know, you want to say, um, and it's gonna be like the cross-exam. Again, if we, if, like you said, there's six, seven, seventeen, and then we, plenty of time, they're gonna continue on. Everyone will get a chance and hopefully all the issues will be good, relevant, not repetitive, and, and we appreciate, and the board appreciates everyone coming out. So as people come up, we'll swear them in, and four minutes to go. Just so you can all, you all understand the math like me, four person, four minutes a person, minute to get them up and down and swear in, you got five minutes per person. Twenty-five people speak, you're, you're pushing two and a half hours just to twenty-five, I assume more than that. So it's an attempt to hear everybody. So anyway, that being said, please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Ellie Falco, F-A-L-C-O, Twenty J. Y. Avenue.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I didn't know about the expert testimony that was given.
One side, one side.
Could you repeat your name, please? Can you, can you have her repeat her name, please?
I, I didn't know about the expert testimony that was gonna be given, um, so I just kind of rewrote it because I have the same information and I do have some of the documents with me that I can, um, give to the secretary. Um, I'm certainly not an expert in, um, environmental field, but some of the aspects of this application feel, felt obvi- obvious to me. Um, the McDonald's experts stated that they haven't done any air pollution studies on any of their, um, sites, and I did look on Google Earth and none of the sites were similar to ours. One was close, but not the same. They did give, uh, expert testimony on what they felt the amount of traffic would be going through, and that amount of traffic, along with the heavy traffic, uh, along Speedwell, right in that area, which is actually treated as a four-lane road, not a two-lane, um, I have great concerns about the amount of pollution, air pollution. It's very dangerous, and as was stated earlier, with air inversion, temperature inversions, um, and stagnant air, it's really dangerous. Um, it's not only dangerous for the residents in the area, it's dangerous for the staff at McDonald's. Um, it, it, you know, with, even with the drive-through window. I'd like to mention that, uh, the county did a study about Hanover Avenue with recommendations for easing some of the traffic, and those recommendations were not, um, taken into consideration or were turned down by the board. Um, and I would ask that the board revisit that and just see if there's something that might be applicable to help for the traffic in that area. But getting back to McDonald's, um, the, I found this detailed study, I did not find the McDonald's study when I did my research, but I did find the other one, um, that was published in the Journal for Environmental Science on, uh, pollution hotspots with drive-throughs for COVID-19 testing, which is a similar situation to the McDonald's drive-through. So I do have that study, and it's very thorough. And, um, I also have a paper from Sustainable Development Code that talks about the same issue and also pedestrian safety problems, and it's very thoroughly cited. So I'd like to, the board, to consider this. Also, as, as stated earlier, many cities and towns are banning fast food restaurants, any new building, um, of them, for these reasons, pollution, noise, safety, um, and I, I think, um, that's an important area, and I hope that the board will take that into account in their deliberations. Thank you.
Please state, please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
I'm way shorter than that. Hi, I'm Jessica Orr, O-R-R. I live at Fifteen Hillview Avenue, two ninety...
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Here's the time.
Got it.
Do any of you know, um, or have had a loved one hit by a car? Because I have. My mom was hit by a car while walking in the crosswalk on a walk sign. The car was coming from Hanover Avenue, turning onto Styles Avenue. In that one minute, my family's life was changed in an epic way. My mom had to have multiple surgeries, a skin graft, reconstructive surgery on her foot. She spent weeks in the hospital, throughout years, like weeks, not whole years, but you get it, weeks over the two years. Um, she missed many events, including a vacation she's been saving for years to go on. My mother almost died from infections more than once, and I spent my evenings on her side praying for her. My mother, who owned a bridal shop for thirty years in Marstown with my aunt, was forced to sell the store two years after the accident because my mom was still unable to fully work while going to physical therapy. I know that accidents can happen anywhere, but I wanted to share my mom's story because I believe that adding a McDonald's with a two-lane drive-through across from a school and a preschool is just asking for trouble. As of Monday, December nine, two hundred and nine pedestrians have been killed in New Jersey, according to the New Jersey State Police, two hundred and nine pedestrians. McDonald's is proposing a restaurant that has a drive-through lane around the whole building. There's no safe place for our customers to park, to walk, without having to cross in front of the cars. McDonald's is proposing to make a larger crosswalk and flashing signs on Speedwell to help make it easier for people to cross the street. But McDonald's is not going to care when someone gets hit by a car. They won't be here. That will be on all of us. You all are members of this town. You all should have invested interest in this decision. You have done great work over the years. Is approving McDonald's to operate here what you want your legacy to be? I am not an engineer, and I don't play one on TV, but I reviewed our town's master plan and kept seeing some of the same phrases, "To keep with the small-town charm, maintaining the borough system of streets and roads to continue to provide for the safe and efficient movement of traffic and to discourage routes which adversely impact existing and future residential neighborhoods." As someone who lives on Hillview Avenue directly across from the McDonald's location, I feel like this addition is not keeping with that small-time charm, small-town charm, or maintaining the borough system of streets and roads. I also believe that this addition to town is adversely impacting residential neighborhoods. During Mr. Rotolo's opening statement, he said that upon seeing the crowd, he requested his office and the biggest person they had. He then told us that this is not McDonald's first rodeo. Throughout his and his experts' many presentations and ramblings, they mentioned many McDonald's locations across New Jersey that are similar to this location. You, the Planning Board, live in Marst Plains. You know how special this town and our school are. You know how busy Speedwell Avenue is. McDonald's two-lane drive-through does not make sense. Mr. Rotolo also insinuated that those objecting against McDonald's food are the same people toting around five thousand dol- uh, five thousand calorie Starbucks drinks. I personally have no issue with McDonald's. They have the best Diet Coke and fries, hands down. McDonald's two-lane drive-through with backup on Speedwell Avenue, a DoorDash driver attempting to beat the clock, a parent who spent hours at their kid's sporting event rushing to get them home, a landscaping crew with their truck and equipment trying to get something to eat, a child leaving school attempting to walk home, and hundreds of cars visiting McDonald's daily is what I have an issue with. I hope that you, the Planning Board, my neighbors, see how unreasonable this addition would be to our town, even though the location is permitted use. It is not what is best for the town, our families, or our children.
Please raise, please raise my hand. State your name, spell your last.
Hello, I'm Izzy Bergeron, B-E-R-G-E-R-O-N, at the Ford Red Square Drive.
I'm sorry.
Ford Red Square Drive. Izzy, I-Z-Z-Y.
Hannah, do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. When you drive around Morris Plains, you see signs outside of people's houses protesting this restaurant. You see hundreds of people gathered here because they don't want this. You, as a board, are supposed to represent these people, these people who have voted for you, and the people are saying no.
Please raise your right hand, state your names, spell your last.
I'm Lee Connor, C-O-N-N-O-R, at Two Tower Hill Road in Marst Plains.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. May I speak?
You know what? I, I can keep the four minutes. I'll kind of give you a thirty-second notice.
Thank you.
You got it. You can start.
I, I want to refer to specific testimony by, uh, Mr. Greg Paragoy, Principal of Dynamic Traffic on November twelfth. Uh, we, when asked for comparable locations to, to the, of McDonald's, to the proposed one in Marst Plains, he named six. Um, the first one was, uh, Five Thirty-seven Broadway in Bayonne, making him the second McDonald's expert to cite Bayonne as a comparable. Five Sixty-eight Myrtle Avenue, Boom Boom, Hackensack, Malaga, West Long Branch, West Milford. So I looked them up. I wanted to see how, how were they like us? What could we learn from them? Well, I found significant differences. One, Hackensack has a four-lane road, three are in shopping centers, two are in heavily urbanized commercial areas. No two locations are alike, but these are not like our small town embedded in a residential neighborhood and across from a school. But the most striking thing was that every single one of them has some limitation on traffic. You're either right turn only, left exit only, there's a, a traffic light, they all had some kind of turning lane, something that would tame the traffic, which is not present in this application. And I therefore think that they are not credible as comparables to this proposed site. And although this may be a small thing in the rings of testimony, I think it, it's emblematic of a larger point. These are experts that have worked for McDonald's for years. They'll continue to work for McDonald's. They're doing their job. Mr. Brewer, before you said in reference to, um, Heather Coomer's statement, she's not giving all the facts, she's presenting arguments and reasons to vote one way or another. And I think that's what you, you get when you have applicant experts testifying. Everybody knows that, nothing wrong with that, but it's our obligation to give equal weight to opposing viewpoints that are backed by fact, and we've heard a lot of them now. There are a lot of outstanding questions. Odor, noise, environmental impact, what the heck is the deal with the trucks on Dayton? I, I don't know. Um, noise, too small parking spaces, so many loose ends. So I just ask you to weigh pros and cons very, very carefully, and, and let's not, um, simply approve of McDonald's because there are some deep pockets and some very expert, experts representing them. Thank you. I'd like to...
Please state your name and spell your last.
Hi, yes, Joanne Dugan, D-U-G-A-N, Thirty-One Campfield Place.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
But first of all, I'd like to say this is my worst nightmare, to be up in front of all of you speaking. Um, so I try to keep it short. In three days, I will be sixty-four years old. I have lived every one of those years on either Dayton Road or Campfield Place. I grew up in a small town. I grew up in small-town America. We rode our bikes all over Marst Plains. We walked uptown to hang out at Botland's. Some of you older people might remember the candy store and toy store. We played at the cornfield now known as Simon's Park. We all had it home only when the five o'clock whistle blew. It was an idyllic way to grow up. Unfortunately, the children growing up in Marst Plains today no longer have the same safe town to roam alone and play in. The traffic on Speedwell Avenue and surrounding streets has increased tremendously over the years. Cars cutting through our neighborhoods have made it exponentially more dangerous for everyone, and I would never let my daughter cross Speedwell as I did in my childhood. Trying to cross Speedwell Avenue now is like taking your life in your hands. Most cars do not yield to pedestrians, even when waving our flags. This is borne out by a recent operation conducted by the Marst Plains Police Department, which I believe was stated in a different meeting. Driving in this town is no better. Trying to make a left turn out of Dayton Road during morning rush at any time between two-thirty and seven P.M. is a near impossibility. If you need to turn left out of Dayton, you have to go around the block to Campfield, to Academy, to use a traffic light, which is the longest light known to man, but I digress. I'm certain that patrons exiting the proposed drive-through restaurant will circumvent the angled driveway proposed at the Dayton Road exit and propose, and proceed right and turn through the neighborhood to get to the light. If by some chance this exit is removed, they will turn right onto Speedwell and then right onto Dayton. Campfield Place has no sidewalks, and we have already had many close calls with children playing and pedestrians walking, one this year. Adding a minimum of seven hundred to eight hundred cars entering and exiting a double-lane drive-through is a tragedy waiting to happen. The granting of the many variances required by the drive-through restaurant will only exacerbate an already dangerous situation. Traffic, safety, noise, no loading zone, eighteen-wheelers exiting in a residential zone, parking issues, buffer zone, and not to mention the environmental issues of seven hundred to eight hundred cars idling within feet of residences. In my opinion, up until tonight, this is a very critical item that has never been adequately addressed by the applicant or the board. Trying to shoehorn a business into a location to which it is not equipped to accommodate will create a substantial detriment to the surrounding residential properties and the town at large. This establishment will not comply with the town's master plan. Just because a drive-through of some kind is permitted use does not mean that this type of high-body establishment should be approved, considering the number of variances required and the overall det- detriment to the community of Cameron, not to mention the effects to the other small eateries in town. I feel that there are just too many negatives to this application, and granting the many variances will do absolutely nothing to and answer our community. I hope the board will give this application the scrutiny it deserves and will vote to preserve the small-town feeling of Marst Plains and not turn this into a drive-through town. Thank you very much.
Please state your name, spell your last.
Nancy Mira B E L L E, Three Corn Nine Lane.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're gonna give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I would like to commend the residents who gave their time to attend these meetings, do research, ask questions, some of which frankly should have been asked by members of the Planning Board, and who obviously care about our community. The important question here is how would granting the requested variances benefit the community? The community as a whole is faced with traffic, public safety, and trash issues. The neighborhood nearby, also a part of our community, faces noise, air pollution, and loss of property value. It makes sense that the estimated seven hundred cars per day slowing down to turn into the restaurant will impede the traffic moving... restaurant will impede the traffic moving smoothly on Speedway Avenue. The angle of turning into the site by the tractor-trailer delivery truck will also disrupt the flow of traffic. If cars do turn onto Dayton Road to eventually get to the light on Academy Road in order to make a left-hand turn onto Speedway, then the residents of those streets face an increase in traffic. Traffic compromised. If patrons congregate in the parking lot, especially late in the evening and perhaps after the establishment has closed, who is responsible for moving them along? And after how long of a time? If it is the job of the police, does this mean they are not patrolling somewhere else in town? The people in the neighborhood could also be at risk with groups of strangers nearby. Public safety compromised. The placement of a crosswalk with blinking lights indicating pedestrians wanting to cross Speedway Avenue is no guarantee of pedestrian safety. A fast-food restaurant would likely be a draw for school-aged children who might not be very careful about how they cross such a busy street. Those consequences are awful to think about. Pedestrian safety is compromised. Where are the results of your quality studies? Seven hundred cars per day idling in a drive-through and a large tractor-trailer delivery truck idling for approximately forty-five minutes twice a week cannot be good for the air quality in the proximity to the location. Air quality compromised. There will be disruption to the peace of the neighborhood with the noise of idling cars, idling delivery trucks, garbage pickup, and grease trap cleaning. The peace of the neighborhood is compromised. The area surrounding the restaurant will be a waste ground for food wrappers, used cups, etc. If people walk to the restaurant, take out their food and drinks, eating as they walk away, the easiest way to dispose of the garbage is to throw it on the ground. No matter how much we would like to think differently, there will be food wrappers along the way from the restaurant. Cleanliness and attractiveness of the town compromised. For the people living in the neighborhood, will the close proximity to a fast-food drive-through actually be a selling feature to attract new homeowners? Someone might be tempted to buy if the price were right, meaning lower than what comparable neighborhoods without a fast-food drive-through might bring? Property values compromised. A drive-through restaurant does not bring more business to other establishments in town. People pick up their meals and will not take time to make other stops on their way home. If anything, the town should be looking for something to enhance the businesses already here. Established businesses compromised. Yes, an empty space in town will be occupied, but at what cost to the people living in the neighborhood nearby and the town in general? Again, the important question is, how will granting the requested variances benefit the community? Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your last.
Pam Dice Moran, D-I-S-E hyphen M-O-R-A-N.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Seven Hillview Avenue. My family and I live at Seven Hillview Avenue, just a little over two hundred feet from the property. We have lived in our home for seventeen years. I am the English-as-a-second language teacher at Borough School. I have been a teacher in Morris Plains for nine years. Hillview is a great location. We can walk anywhere in town. We are a block from Simon's Park and right next to the school, literally on the other side of the fence. We have always felt sheltered and cozy at home, close to most places we want to go, but still private in our yard and house. My daughter would play in our backyard, but she could also walk to the playground or down the block to her friend's house. We always felt comfortable that she was safe. I walked to school no matter the weather because it would take ten to fifteen minutes to drive from our property and budding the school. At that time of day, at most times of the day, but specifically as school is getting ready to start at 7:45 a.m., there's a lot of traffic on Speedway. Anytime I am leaving the house to go anywhere down Speedway toward the train station, I loop roll around town. It adds at least five to ten minutes to any trip to attempt to turn left onto Speedway out of Roseville. Even though it is supposed to be one lane in either direction at that point of the road, due to the level of traffic, drivers start forcing Speedway into a four-lane road right where Hillview intersects with Speedway Avenue. It is dangerous and frustrating. In the morning, I see all the kids running up to Myrtle School along Speedway from my upstairs window. Very few students take the bus. Only those who live miles away are in a dangerous area. Crossing Speedway Avenue is terrifying. Cars often don't stop to yield, and when a car does stop, another car may drive around it. I hold my breath and pray every time I cross in the crosswalk. A drive-through McDonald's will make crossing Speedway Avenue even more dangerous than it already is by adding thousands of cars or hundreds of cars a day to an already over-busy road. This will be especially dangerous for all our kids crossing Speedway before and after school just a block from that property. We are a walking town. That has been a big part of the master plan, to grow and support our many local businesses while preserving our small-town feeling. A drive-through McDonald's will hurt the businesses that are here, especially the restaurants. Dunkin' Donuts, who has been a big community supporter for years, will likely be affected the most. My husband and I have been to every meeting about this proposal. I have finished about two blankets as well as a scarf while I've been here. This has been emotional for us. We are invested. This is our home. These are our kids. I feel disheartened to see the way McDonald's attorney has disparaged the residents and treated everyone rudely and with disdain. I feel betrayed to see some members of the planning board be rude to residents and conciliatory to McDonald's. Is it the planning board representing Morris Plains and its residents? Why are they taking McDonald's at their word instead of doing their own studies and accepting experts that were hired to use their data to show in favor of McDonald's? This whole thing has not seemed above board. Why did the realtor advertise on their site about a drive-through a year ahead of the change in zoning? Why are our First Amendment rights of speech being limited and timed? Why are there only a few members of this board actually standing up for the citizens of Morris Plains? I am proud to be part of this caring town full of residents that will stand together across party lines to protect our children and to emphasize the town goals when those in power don't.
Please state your names, spell your last.
Angela Lewis, L-E-W-I-S, One Twenty-Six Glenbrook Road.
Please raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I wanted to piggyback off something that Pam just brought up about our First Amendment rights regarding last week, when many of us in the audience were limited from making public comment with an arbitrary statement that because some people may have contributed to a crowdfunding, that we were then in turn represented by the attorney that the LLC hired. We cannot find any evidence of that, and frankly, we're not sure why we were basically told that we couldn't make those comments. We were not able to question the applicant's planner. We were not able to question the planner that was hired by the LLC. We missed the opportunity to get answers to many questions, and it just does not seem fair. So with that, we are aware that we can file a complaint with the county prosecutor or the attorney general, which we are looking into doing because we feel that we harmless caused by not being able to answer some of the questions that we had specifically last week. In addition to that, we have, I don't know, I'm going to ask a question. Are we allowed to reference the petition that we created? We have 1,230 signatures on a petition that does not want to have this McDonald's drive-through on Speedway Avenue. I have a small sampling of comments that were made from residents. I would like to submit it if allowed. You could read that. I'd be happy to read some of them now.
Ma'am, typically, now, I'll pause your time. You can't bring somebody else's testimony in.
Okay.
Anything you want to say on your post.
Okay. Yeah, so my thoughts echo most of what's on here. We just do not understand what a drive-through fast-food restaurant brings to Morris Plains. We don't understand what the benefit of it is. Everything about it seems more negative than positive, and everything that we've heard over these last few weeks has actually been worse than what we originally thought, as far as the plans, as far as the traffic it'll bring, as far as the engineering aspect of it, as far as the pollution, which I learned so much more tonight than you, Pam. Frankly, I'm just upset that most of the planning board hasn't been asking the questions that we would have wanted them to ask. Some of you have, and thank you very much for that. But the bottom line is, what is the benefit of this McDonald's drive-through in the middle of an already crowded Speedway Avenue with two schools within a few hundred yards away? We just don't understand, and we don't see what the point is. So, that's it.
Please state your names, spell your last.
Lori Camma, C-A-M-A, Twelve Lynderberry Lane, Morris Plains.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I just wanted to make a statement that if the applicant actually fit into the existing zoning criteria, it would not need the variances that have been requested. In previous testimony, you heard the planning board has no obligation to approve the requested variances since they only serve the needs of the owner and McDonald's. The variances do not result in any benefit for Morris Plains. They only attempt to force-fit the applicant's oversized business model into a space too small to accommodate it. As heard from the Morris Plains planner, each application is considered independently, so it is irrelevant and insufficient for the current applicant to compare its requested variances against any other existing Morris Plains businesses. The application will not benefit the town's master plan goals nor support the police department's goal to reduce traffic accidents in town. They know we have a problem already. There are too many traffic accidents in our town. I think this year it was three hundred, over three hundred, and we want to get it down under two hundred. Pedestrian safety should not be an afterthought. If approved, our taxes will inevitably be paying for additional police support to ensure pedestrian safety. We know it at our July Fourth fireworks or the Family Day fireworks. We need police out there directing traffic. We are going to have an issue on high-traffic days requiring our budget to go toward hiring additional support. In terms of environmental and noise standards, Mr. Riley stated that enforcement and tests would be conducted only post-development. I have concerns about the degree of leverage that the town of Morris Plains would actually have to enforce any violations. So I realize we, according to the approach before, need to take a leap of faith, but again, I'm not sure we have any leverage. So now is the time to act by denying these variances, which is within your ability to do, regardless of any county-wide or neighbor towns, you know, and longstanding camaraderie between the planning board members and the owner, the applicant, or council. We expect the Morris Plains Planning Board and its attorney to serve the interests and needs of the citizens and constituents of Morris Plains and to decline the requested variances. Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your last.
Hi, Meredith Thanos, T-H-A-N-O-S. Meredith, M-E-R-E.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Forty-six Parker Drive. My name is Meredith Thanos. I am a full-time working mother, and I have a four-year-old son, Angeli, who will be attending Borough School once he reaches third grade. I'm not only concerned about the impact a drive-through McDonald's would have on him and his classmates, but also on Morris Plains as a whole. Studies have shown that the exposure to poor food-quality environments has an important effect on adolescent eating patterns and weight. According to a research team from University of Columbia, Berkeley, and the London School of Economics, having a fast-food outlet within .1 to .2 miles of a school produces over a 5% increase in obese students when compared to schools with fast-food restaurants farther away. Consequential health impacts associated with obesity include type-two diabetes, cardiovascular disease, and depression. Depression is an increasingly concerning epidemic among children, especially children of borough school age. Fast-food restaurants, especially chains, often target children to increase sales and brand loyalty. Today's parents are stretched thinner than ever to work and care for our families, and honestly, it feels exploitative to dangle chicken nuggets and Happy Meal toys in front of their children on the way home from school, who are just beginning to learn healthy eating and don't fully understand that we can't have McDonald's for dinner all the time. Cities and towns viewed as progressive and desirable places to live are trying to be more walkable, accessible, and are trying to make school zones cleaner and healthier. So why is Morris Plains trying to move backward instead of forward? Less homebuyers are going to want to move to a town with a drive-through McDonald's across the street from the elementary and middle school because that sends a clear message that our communities, especially the children's health and safety, is not the priority. While we understand that the two lots that the McDonald's have have been rezoned for a drive-through last year, a drive-through business is clearly detrimental to the health of our community and children, and that should be the exception to the rule, and it should not be permitted. Doing so would be the epitome of public health and safety failure that we would not be able to recover from once the damage is done. Please keep the public health of students the top priority on what goes across the street from our schools. Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your last.
Summer Harrison, that's H-A-R-R-I-S-O-N.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Two Maple Ave. I'm going to try to cut down what I was going to say so it's less redundant with what people have said so far, so I keep changing my focus here, but I'm a parent of two children, one of whom goes to Joyful Noise, the preschool directly across the street from the proposed McDonald's, and one who will be in another year and a half going to the Borough School. And so I am very concerned about the safety, both, you know, the health and the physical safety of our children crossing the street here, walking around in this area. So the applicant's planner cited in the last meeting that there is no standalone McDonald's in Morris County that has a dedicated loading zone, and this was evidence as to why the variance should be granted. But it is also true that there is no standalone McDonald's in Morris County that abuts a residential zone nor are any adjacent to a school or preschool as the proposed plan is, and I checked all of them. So while drive-throughs are an approved use for this zone, as we all know, the particular conditions of this application and the high-volume style of drive-through the applicant proposes necessitate, I would think, an especially high bar for safety when considering granting the C2 variances. The applicant's lawyer has, or and experts repeatedly say how the board decided that this was an approved use, so it shouldn't be up for debate. While we all know that that is true, it is also true that the Borough made our ordinances the way they are for a reason, including our loading zone, sign, parking, and other requirements. They've already decided that these are the requirements that make sense for our town, and thus all variances must be found in each individual case to benefit the community, rather than being assumed to be minor or pro forma because other kinds of businesses nearby or in other zones have been granted them. Furthermore, the applicant's planner stated that the MLUL Purpose A, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands, was met because the Friendly's building is currently unused. This omits the fact that the application will not result in a net gain in developed buildings to the Borough as the building next door is being knocked down and will in fact remove a potentially developable site from our downtown corridor for the foreseeable future. Reducing the number of properties on Speedway appears to be in opposition to the 2018 Master Plan's goal of encouraging an appropriate mix of land uses. The applicant testified to the benefit of providing fewer and smaller parking places and no loading zone as advantageous because it reduces impervious coverage. However, this ignores the existing land and trees that will be paved over and all of the environment. the environmental impacts met tonight, mentioned tonight. I did not hear any testimony as to what the benefit, what benefit to the Borough there is for an increased number of freestanding signs, and I can't imagine that this is an oversight of the McDonald's team. The only possible benefit they have is that they allow the owner to make more money. Okay, is that the end? So I'm just close to say that while this is a permitted use, all drive-throughs are not the same, and this particular kind of double drive-through at a high intensity does not belong in this place.
Please state your names, spell your last.
Joy Dolan, D.O.L.A.N.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My four-year-old son, Jason, attends Joyful Noise preschool, which is directly across the street from the proposed McDonald's, along with more than a hundred children. I'm here today to remind the council that the safety of our children is paramount. If a drive-through McDonald's is built across the street from Joyful Noise, it will inevitably create safety hazards for our children at drop-off and pickup. Many Joyful Noise families walk their children to school. The spot where the crosswalk is leading to the proposed McDonald's entrance is dangerous because it's not a standard corner-to-corner crosswalk and is less noticeable to drivers. For this reason, the seven-hundred-plus cars leaving the McDonald's daily from the driveway or Dayton and then turning onto Speedway are not going to be expecting children and parents walking their kids to Joyful Noise in the crosswalk. The crosswalk is only thirty to forty feet into their turns, and they may not have time to stop. Walkers will also have a harder time anticipating and reacting to drivers making sudden turns onto Speedway because they will have to focus on a lot of cars coming out of McDonald's in addition to traffic from Speedway, Dayton, and Rosedale. Students cross the Hillview Crosswalk to get to the school and will also have more drive-through traffic baking sharp, sudden sharp turns there as well. Drive-through customers unfamiliar with our town will not be anticipating children since the preschool is located in the back of the church. Another major safety concern at Joyful Noise is that the drivers coming out of McDonald's will try to circle back towards Morris Town by cutting through the side streets, and they will be tempted to cut through the Joyful Noise parking lot. This poses a major hazard for students, teachers, and parents at drop-off, especially since cut-through drivers may go a speed inappropriate for a school area. Remember, these are children between the ages of two and five. They are impulsive. They don't know how to look both ways or watch behind them while they're waiting for their other sibling to get loaded into the stroller in a school parking lot. Also, consider the tractor trailers and trucks that will need to turn around. Those are much more dangerous to a school parking lot due to their size and increased blind spots. Drive-through traffic should not be in front of a school. While you can't deny an application based on increased congestion or traffic, it can be denied because it is a detriment to our children's safety walking to and from school. A larger crosswalk and a walk sign are not going to stop cars from making sharp turns onto Speedway or for looking for shortcuts. Our children and family's safety and the school's accessibility must be the top priority. Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your last.
Lauren Martin, M.A.R.T.I.N.
Address?
Oh, Two Beach Street.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So I'm speaking today as a pediatrician and as a parent of children who cross Speedway to and from the school. My number-one concern, as was expressed by the other residents with this McDonald's application, is the safety of our children. They do not have a voice or a vote, and I would like to speak on their behalf tonight. I do not feel that their safety was considered when this area across from the school is rezoned as a drive-through. Okay. I do not feel that their safety was considered when this area across from the school was rezoned as a drive-through in the fall of 2023, but I do hope that it will be considered now. At the time that it was rezoned, it was a single lot, which perhaps would have allowed a smaller-volume drive-through. However, combining the lots and allowing the variance changes to build a drive-through of this magnitude will undoubtedly present safety issues for our children. With seven-hundred or more transactions a day, every car pulling in and out of this lot poses a threat to our children. While I understand McDonald's claims that most of these cars will be pass-throughs, the act of pulling in and out poses a risk independent of whether these carts would have been coming through anyway. Add to this DoorDash, Uber Eats, et cetera, where the drivers get paid more for how quickly they can deliver, and we have a certain risk of having a pedestrian struck. I'd like the board to consider that the crosswalk will be updated through a grant, so this update to the crosswalk should not be considered as a benefit to the McDonald's application. Morris Plains children disproportionately walk to school due to lack of buses. This is unique to our town. I have been supportive of this as walking to school is excellent for our kids' health. My daughter gets daily exercise and socialization during this time. However, our children have the right to do this safely. I encourage the board to take a look at the AEP policy statement tied to child pedestrian safety for July 2023. This article notes that child pedestrian mortality rates have been increased by over ten percent over the past ten years and that sixty-two percent of fatalities occur mid-block. This article presents extensive data that planning a built environment has the greatest impact on child pedestrian safety. The article emphasizes strategies such as complete streets, where policies promote the development of roadways with all people in mind, including pedestrians, and Vision Zero, which focuses on the fact that human error is unavoidable, and solutions are created to promote a safe environment for pedestrians. This McDonald's application is not in line with any of these policies outlined in the article from the AEP, which supports my position that our children will be less safe. The likelihood that a child will be hit by a vehicle pulling in and out of this McDonald's will increase with each vehicle and each day, week, or year that this high-volume drive-through is in place. I appeal to the board to think about our children when they consider allowing the additional variances that are needed to allow this high-volume drive-through to be built immediately across from two schools. Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your last, and give Karen your address.
Daniel Conway, Three Greenwood Road. Conway is spelled C.O.N.W.A.Y.
And your address?
Three Greenwood Road.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I don't have prepared statements. I would just simply ask you to consider the following. What haven't they told us? They did not come in here with an environmental analysis. They did not come in here and say, "We have thirteen thousand McDonald's in the United States. We have all the data you can ask for. We are the experts in fast food." They reluctantly gave us one answer from their McDonald's Corporation. After three meetings, they said, "We expect roughly eight hundred transactions a day." Guys, this location will absolutely destroy it, and I appreciate and respect the fact that they want to be here because it will destroy it. There will be well in excess of eight hundred transactions a day. There is no McDonald's from here to Morris Town, to Madison, to Chatham, all towns similar to ours. There are none. You have Florham Park, and you have Dover, Tulane Roads off of Route 10. There is not a McDonald's on the Main Street in any of those towns along the same train line that we aspire to be. The, the property values in those towns continue to grow because it's Main Street, New Jersey, Main Street, USA. That's what we want. That's where we're going. Property values in Morris Plains have skyrocketed because people want to be here, not because there's going to be a McDonald's. Let me just point out the community vision statement from 2018. Morris Plains is a safe, healthy, and vibrant small town. I'm not going to repeat the whole thing, but in this land use recommendations, when you approved a drive-through, it was a single lot, but you also said you are going to implement stricter performance and standards that would apply to all non-residential zones. It didn't say you were going to go easier. It didn't say you were going to grant variances for smaller parking spaces, for drive-throughs for two lots. It didn't say any of that. That's not what you, what you approved in your, in your zoning plan. You encourage a mixed land use, of which will complement each other and meet the retail and service needs of the Borough, promoting a desirable visual environment. Also, you wanted to create more walkable downtown. Is walking to McDonald's, is that the plan? Now take that thousand transactions a day and cars turning in and out, a thousand transactions a day, whether you turn in or out, is two thousand turns. Two thousand turns more than you have today. Two thousand more. You have the right and the ability to decline this application because it just doesn't fit, literally and figuratively. The property doesn't fit, and it doesn't fit what we need in a small town, and I don't envy your choice, excuse me, I don't envy where you sit. This is very hard for all of you, I'm sure, and I respect and appreciate both the applicant's experts, their attorney, and the applicant. This is a great town. I'd want to be here, too, but it doesn't fit what we want and need for this town. Thank you very much.
Please state your names, spell your last, and give your address.
David Guida, fifteen Headley Avenue. I'm over three miles away.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I just want to remind the planning board that the testimony from the traffic expert representing McDonald's took four hours of data to perform his report. McDonald's is open one-hundred-and-nineteen hours a week. It took four hours to create the data. I don't think the data is accurate. Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your last, and give your address.
Carolyn Bennett, B.E.N.E.T., and I live at nineteen Dayton Road.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. All right, I'm going to jump right in because I planned for five minutes. The applicant is putting a lot of emphasis on the crosswalk enhancements that are going to be a huge benefit to the town and the people who live here. This feels more like a hail mary approach to try and put a tangible benefit to this application. I can't say it loud enough. Chief Karowski has already shared updates that there is progress with the DOT to enhance the existing crosswalk on Speedway despite the efforts by the applicant. Need I remind us all, there is also no guarantee that the applicant will be able to execute said crosswalk enhancements as the DOT has final say. Unless there's some behind-the-close-door arrangement here with the DOT, which seems like it would be an issue, I don't know how we can put any weight into this benefit. There has been a talk about post-COVID need for drive-through restaurants. However, this is a stretch from the truth. If there was a behavioral study performed today, it would show that Gen Z favors delivery over drive-throughs. Wouldn't you guys want to make investments in opportunities for the future of the town? If this is the consumer trend we are seeing, wouldn't it be more beneficial to the public to approve an application that aligns with these needs? We don't need or want a drive-through here, let alone a McDonald's. Regardless of what this lot was rezoned for, there are also a long list of much better options that would serve a bigger benefit to the town, the residents next to the lot, the students across the street, and, well, to put it bluntly, your legacies. But to bring it back to the facts, Uber Eats, DoorDash seamless, this is the future of fast food, and an overcrowded, small parking lot cannot safely accommodate these idling drivers. The parking lot variance is a huge part of this application, and you all have the power to stand firm on that important factor. This proposal is not safe and is a hazard to everyone on Dayton. I don't care about the proposed force left because drivers will do whatever they want to avoid the bottleneck traffic on Speedway. Look up my police report cited in the September meeting. There was not a sign but a curved median that a truck sped over to avoid the intersection. My son still looks for the truck that wanted to run us over when we're out and about around town. A little sign and a curved egress will not guarantee my kid's safety or the many other kids on Dayton from all of the speeding rush drivers flying out of that lot or the semi-truck that could run him and his bike over when he's in the blind spot. This type of proposal does not need an exit onto Dayton point-blank. If this application is approved, who genuinely is benefiting from it? Is it the unidentified franchise owner? Is it anyone related to the landowner? Is it anyone with shared interests that may be sitting in this room? Is it realtors with inside scoops? Since this proposal is supposed to benefit the public, I just want to make sure that there's a clear interpretation on that word. If there are no detriments, why is the applicant's council trying to make compromises with the residents on Dayton? On record last meeting, he said he's been trying to do that with Jill. He approached me about what they can do for myself as a resident, and I just don't see how, if there's no detriment, why those conversations need to be initiated. I think the answer's staring us all in the face. When I moved into the town, I was told we are the community of Karen. Recently, unfortunately, I am hearing it's the community of corruption. Please prove these rumors wrong. You guys need to do your job to keep us, the public, our children, your neighbors, safe. This application does not benefit us, the town, our children, your neighbors. So please prove us wrong, please prove those rumors wrong, keep us safe, vote accordingly. Thank you.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Sure, Carl Ring, last name R.I.N.G., twenty-two Dayton Road.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good evening, members of planning board. I'm here today, along with my many other concerned residents, to urge you to deny this application. This project raises serious public safety concerns, as you've heard from numerous folks who have already stood up in front of, in front of you. Speedway Avenue is already congested. You guys all know this. You live here as well. It's dangerous, and adding a high-traffic drive-through will only make it worse. Pedestrian cyclists and drivers will all be at greater risk, and the applicant's disregard for these concerns is unacceptable. As multiple residents have stated on the record at times, this disregard has presented itself as both disrespect and dismissal of our valid concerns, with either procedural citations of things like traffic volumes cannot be a reason for denial, or forcing procedural adjustments by the board to limit our ability to voice said concerns because they don't agree or like them, or are frustrated that the process of us voicing our valid concerns is taking too long. Heck, the client's attorney started the public hearings by stating all the different types of businesses that are allowed in this zone, specifically citing different types of businesses as if it was a veiled threat of, "If you don't let McDonald's come in, here are all the boogeymen waiting to move in." Lastly, we are all being asked to trust that things like truck idling, lighting, and trash will be cared for by a store manager or a mysterious operator yet to be determined, neither of which we have any transparency into at this point, and the latter of which is even more frustrating. And while I'm sure the client's attorney would say this is standard McDonald's operating procedure to get approvals before they choose their operator, it still means we are potentially approving the operation of a business in our town without any way to vet the person or entities who will, for all intents and purposes, be required to uphold all the polite promises the client's attorney and witnesses have been quick to commit to. Because sure, they themselves don't have to deliver. And in fact, at one point, one witness made a comment along the lines of, "Well, then your police will deal with it," clearly indicating that their attitude is, "Once this proposal is approved and the site is built, the burden will yet again be on the citizenry to hold the business accountable to their empty promises during this hearing." I urge you to listen to the voices of the residents, prioritize the safety and well-being of our community, and deny this application and protect Morris Plains from the negative impacts from this ill-conceived project. I believe there are better locations for this type of business in Morris Plains. As one of the other residents stated earlier, "It's not that we hate McDonald's, we just don't think it makes sense here at this specific location." On that note, in the last meeting, there was a healthy discussion about the definition of the word reasonable. Well, I will close by saying I looked up the definition. Well, I will close by saying I looked up the definition of reasonable in the dictionary and I can safely say there was not a picture of a McDonald's on Speedway Avenue. Thank you all, have a good night.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Joseph David Bellomo, 121 Mountain Way, Morris Plains. Bellomo, B as in boy, E L L O M O.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Unfortunately, the last time I was up here was because of spreading a conspiracy theory. I simply asked at that time, how do you ordinance it from the ballot?
You could speak over closer to the mic, might help with this.
And better? It's a tough thing being short, you know? I have lived in this town for 48 years. I know many of you on the board and I've worked with some of you, okay? I know that you are public servants that care about this town and were part at that. So conspiracy theories out the door. Which brings me to the application. As I have come to understand, the board is charged with applying the intent of an ordinance to the application, that's a charge. The board should look at the ordinance to decide if the application provides for a permitted use. So, what was the council's intent? As I read the ordinance, the intent is clear. The council wanted to make the downtown more appealing to customers so they would visit. In addition, the town had two vacant parcels and a council had been hearing from the residents and something had to be done. So the two parcels that were vacant were appropriate for some, but not all of the permitted uses. There were 28. Possibly there was only one lot feasible for a drive-through and that was the Acme Lot. It was big enough, alright? The vacant Friendly's Lot, standing alone as it was when the ordinance was passed, was too small to accommodate the drive-through restaurant. The applicant decided to ask for a variance on combining the two non-performing lots. Your planner indicated that a variance could be issued if it was, as the McDonald's planner said, a permitted, a per, excuse me, a permitted use. What the McDonald's planner did not say was that as a permitted use, as long as the applicant can prove its benefit is not to exceed, be exceeded by, et cetera, to the public good. In this, the applicant bears the burden of proof. I submit to you that the applicant has not met his burden. The traffic impact study that was presented by McDonald's, although the process was deemed to be within certain acceptable processes by the board's expert, was lacking in both information and analysis. As I'm sure you remember, the traffic expert only gave up the average visits of seven to eight hundred cars a day after intense and unrelenting questioning by the public and the board. Nor does a traffic report indicate the effect this new traffic generated by 78 cars entering and exiting the site will have on the adjacent streets of the town, nor does the applicant speak to the intent of the ordinance, which, to quote, "provide retail and commercial uses, specifically uses that emphasize onsite experience." By definition, the application is actually counterintuitive to the council's intent. Customers will be driving through the town, not stopping for an onsite experience. Seven to eight hundred cars entering and exiting the site is going to overwhelm an already overburdened Speedway Avenue. You have heard from residents about the very valid concerns for the safety of the children who attend Joyful Noise and Borough School. They have good reason for concern. The applicant offers blinking pedestrian signals to block the box area and moving crosswalks to mitigate safety issues. These precautions that the applicant is off-
Nah, it's just about the-
I'm almost time. These precautions that the applicant is offering are not only inadequate but will compad the bottleneck at this site. You have listened to many comments on this application. No easy task. Our board attorney has bent over backwards and provided the applicant with a fair hearing. Unfortunately, you have a major corporation breathing down your nips with deep pockets. As a resident of a small town-
Mr. Thomas, he gives this for everybody, everybody's gonna wanna do it.
Okay. As a resident of a small town, I ask you to consider the facts of the council's intent. Deny the application on the council's intent. Deny the application on safety issues. Deny the application that is a detriment to the public.
That's a wonderful idea. I'm sure unbugging it will do that.
Turn it off. Just press and hold. Just press and hold.
It's easy, man. You ready? Wanna do it? Please state your name and spell your last and give your address.
Cecilia Hahn, H A H N, 82 Maple Ave.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I have lived in Morris Plains since 2012. I have a Borough student, a Mountain Way student, and two dogs. I walk around town regularly, including on Speedway. The standards and examples provided by McDonald's in their application reflect McDonald's corporate priorities, not the unique character ordinances of our community. Most of their supporting materials and testimony rely on comparisons to locations vastly different from this site, which is directly across from middle school and preschool and nestled in the heart of a residential neighborhood. If this application were evaluated under Morris Plains standards, the decision would be clear. The requested variances are inconsistent with our community's values and planning requirements. For example, the proposal seeks to reduce both the number and size of parking spaces, which does not align with town regulations and practical needs. In addition, the plan omits a dedicated living space despite the town's clear requirement for one. McDonald's proposes instead to allow 18-wheel trucks to park haphazardly onsite for 45-minute deliveries, creating significant safety and logistical concerns. These are just two of the many reasons, many issues with this application, each providing substantial grounds for its rejection. Beyond these technical points, a McDonald's in the heart of Morris Plains would fundamentally alter the town's character. Morris Plains is a community of Karen, defined by its small-town charm and activities that bring residents together, including our farmer's market, pumpkin illumination, Memorial Day Parade, and the daily sight of residents walking and running along Speedway Avenue. McDonald's here is simply out of place. Approving this application would mark a turning point in Morris Plains' history, one that undermines the values and environment that attract families like mine to live here. Speedway Avenue would no longer be a vibrant community hub for, but a thorough fare to be avoided, except by those who have no choice. I urge the planning board to envision a different future for this site, one that aligns with our town's identity and prioritizes pedestrian safety and community benefit. McDonald's is not that future.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Julie Gould, G O U L D, 35 Grove Avenue.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Before I make my statement, I just wanna address any board members who have, who are currently or have been nodding off or have been noticed sleeping during previous meetings. I want you all to know that what we have to say matters, so I really hope you're listening and honoring your responsibilities of representing our borough and your constituents. When my husband and I were deciding where to move seven years ago, we prioritized moving to a town that put family and children first, with a first-rate education system, a walkable downtown, and master plan standards that would maintain that small-town feel, no matter how it grew over the years. You see, the Morris Plains I know cares about their community. It cares that their children grow up well-nourished with a beautiful farmer's market that grows every year. It cares that their pedestrians can feel safe, and yes, even if that means flags that the McDonald's representatives have mocked, it does its best to do that. Morris Plains is even encouraging more bike and motorized scooter traffic with the impending bike racks. All of this maintains the spirit and safety of Morris Plains, the community of Karen. The master plan has been updated thoughtfully over the years with these standards in mind. McDonald's does not have our Borough or townspeople's best interests in mind. Besides their food contributing to the obesity epidemic, their drive-throughs polluting environments, their plans disregard the standards we have set for our town. And by allowing them and their variances, you show others that the well-thought-out vision for Morris Plains is just lip service. With hundreds more vehicles buzzing in and out of a double drive-through, it's only a matter of time that tragedy will strike this town. I mean, come on, it's literally across the street from Borough School. This all comes down to the fact that McDonald's is trying to force-fit their business model into a too-small of a space to do it safely and in line with our town standards. They have not done their legal responsibility to prove a single benefit to the town by allowing their variances, nor a commitment to the health of our residents. I have lost track how many dinners and bedtimes I have missed at this point, showing up here to make sure my feelings and those shared by hundreds, those who can be here and are not, are represented. I raise my children, that no matter how big of a bully they are dealing with, calling them names, mocking them, that what's important is their integrity and to do the right thing, even if upholding their standards makes them uncomfortable. You have a responsibility to represent us as your townspeople. We all have to live with the consequences of your choice. Please do the right thing and uphold the master plan standards and safety of this town and deny the McDonald's application.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Mary Lou Bellomo, B E L L O M O, 121 Mountain Way.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My statement is very brief, I really don't need the clock. First, I would like to thank the planning board members for their time and service to our town. I don't think any of us could have ever predicted that a change in a variance would bring us to this point. My concern with the McDonald's application is one of safety for our children, especially residents' children. The year we moved to Morris Plains, a child was struck by a car crossing Speedway Avenue to get to Dunkin' Donuts. He was seriously injured and never fully recovered. Perhaps some of you remember Raymond. In 2018, a child was struck by a car on Speedway Avenue crossing over to Franklin Place while using the crosswalk. In 2022, a teenager was hit by a car crossing Speedway Avenue by the Chase Bank Drive-Thru. My own daughter, when she was a student at Borough School, was struck by a car crossing Speedway Avenue using the traffic light at the post office. The car was traveling at approximately 10 miles per hour. She ended up with a concussion. What McDonald's is proposing will bring 700 to 800 cars a day to Speedway Avenue. How does this application enhance the safety of Morris Plains? With two schools directly across the street from this proposed site, how can this be safe and better for our town? We are a small town fighting a big corporation, but even small towns like ours have town councils and planning boards that can use their votes to protect the safety of its residents. I ask the members of the planning board to do just that.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Gail Devine, D E V I N E, 91 Sun Valley Way.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. As a 51-year resident of Morris Plains, that's how old I am, who was born here and is raising my children here, I need to start by saying I'm in recovery from a recent major surgery, but I'm still here tonight, way past my bedtime. That's relevant because it shows how important this is to me and to the many who can't be here to stay, or who couldn't stay this late, to plead to the planning board that you vote to decline this project. I've never been more proud of the people in this town, and I'm not a prior, and I'm how they've come together, especially during a heated election year, spending countless hours at long meetings here and behind the scenes to prove to this board how bad this project is for our town. The board has substantial legal reasons to decline, noting the multiple variances required that have implicit and substantial contributions to the detriment of the public good, let alone lacking any benefit other than money for a few. And yes, I'm quoting Morris Plains' documents to show how this project goes directly against policies that are here to help protect the town, its roadways, infrastructure, and most importantly, its citizens. A fast-food joint being present in this small-town main street across from two schools will cause multiple safety issues, as many have presented better than me, as well as air, noise, and light pollution, especially to the homes that are in close proximity to this property, closer than any other McDonald's is in the state to residential homes. It's obvious to most in this town and this room, to all those who have been able to stay awake during all these meetings at least, and the dozens watching online each night, that merely the purposes of the owner will be advanced with this project. The grant of approval of variances required to move forward must actually, quote, "benefit the community," which it so obviously doesn't. A mission statement from the town says Borough seeks innovative and substantial solutions to mitigate, definition, to make less severe, serious, or painful, to mitigate the impact of future development on its roadways and infrastructure, and most importantly, repeat, quote, "most importantly," it's a quote, "maintain the small-town character of Morris Plains." Nothing about McDonald's' small-town character, nor does it encourage anyone to stop, dine, shop, nor play here. They will drive in and out. I do appreciate the board and all the work you guys do for our town. I appreciate also that when the zoning was changed to allow the drive-through, you were living through COVID with all of us, in a year where businesses closed daily and people loved drive-throughs to avoid being near people, which isn't really what we want in our town, no? I appreciate that and I believe the board was shortsighted and never expected something so big, like the mega corporation that McDonald's is, to come to our small town. They didn't expect it because it's not something that is on small-town main streets. But it's trying to push its way in now and you have the legal power to say no.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Robert Carr, C A R R, no relation. It's a C. 33 Maple Avenue.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. A society grows great when old folks plant trees whose shade they know they will never sit in. It's a Greek proverb attributed to the Stoics. The Stoics believed that people should serve the common good in a way that would benefit future generations. What is going on here benefits no one. Smart, thoughtful, conscientious- Smart, thoughtful consideration of how to use this space is the kind of forward thinking that the proverb speaks to, not a rush to meet the needs of an anxious developer. As a lot of people may or may not realize, as that beautiful quaint mural in the back denotes, that Morris Plains turns one hundred years old in a little over a year. Is this the way we want to usher in the next hundred years of this town? By selling out our downtown to a soulless corporation which brings nothing but traffic? Why have a master plan if you're not going to use it? Why have ordinances if they are so easily thrown away? The lack of imagination is what got us into this problem. The council did not imagine this when they deliberated for this change. You say your hands are tied. The only thing tying your hands is your own lack of imagination. I implore this body and connected councils to promote other locations for this plan. I bet if you considered the large, open, languishing lot on fifty-three, this town would throw you a parade. After all, as Ms. Orr mentioned before, is this what you want your legacy to be? This decision will be yours forever. When people ask who did this, we will speak your names. This was the work of the two thousand and twenty-four Morris Plains Planning Board, we'll say. Accidents, disruptions, loss of property values, and, God forbid, loss of life will be the legacy of your decision. Plant better trees.
Please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Jamie Potkalesky, thirty-one Grove Avenue.
I'm sorry, what was the last name? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Don't do this. There is no question that allowing a drive-through restaurant in the heart of Morris Plains is a substantial detriment to the public good. Allowing these variances only supports the business. They do not benefit our communities. The applicant did not meet the burden of proof. You've heard countless questions and pleas from the community who are desperate for you to do the right thing. The applicant is betting that you won't catch them in a lie. They're betting that you won't have the courage to demand better for our community. They're betting that you won't turn a blind eye while they run over this community. Don't do this to our community. Allowing these variances is ensuring the downfall of our community. This kind of business does not belong here. It's plain and simple. If the business truly embodied the ideals of the master plan, they would not be asking you to change so many rules. A drive-through restaurant with a focus on serving as many people as it can, over seven or eight hundred cars, as fast as humanly possible, makes Morris Plains nothing more than a drive-through town. This business plan does not offer any experience to the customer. It literally encourages them to come and go as fast as possible, leaving nothing but exhaust, fumes, trash, and noise in their wake. The applicant's planner referenced more favorable ordinances in other zones within Morris Plains several times during his testimony. It does not belong here. Allow this drive-through somewhere else in town that will cause less problems. Why downtown when it's impossible to drive through Speedway half the time already? Why across the street from our schools? The applicant is preying on this community and on the health and safety of our children. You have the ability to protect this community. Don't do this when we don't have all the information. Promises to comply in this room mean nothing when we have not once heard from the person who is actually going to be running this establishment. Don't let the smoke and mirrors fool you. Just last week, we heard that certain signage lady was a safety concern and therefore not negotiable. Minutes later, it was reversed. Someone is lying. Allowing this to happen is wrong and irresponsible. Be better than those that are allowed us in this position in the first place. Be better than who the applicant thinks you are. Just don't do this.
I think of, uh, you stopped one out, and so I think there's going to be two more witnesses tonight. Please state your names, spell your last.
Kate Katz, K-A-T-Z.
And your address, please.
Seventeen Idlewild Drive.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. My husband and I arrived in Morris Plains in two thousand and thirteen and quickly started dreaming of raising a family here. We were both runners and appreciated the jog-ability of the Speedway area as well as the charming downtown. We spent many years driving from, sorry, sorry. Um, we are both runners and appreciated the jog-ability of the Speedway area as well as the charming downtown. We spent many years driving from Foxwood Condos to park in town so that we could run in a safer area than along Route Fifty-Three. We remained ever hopeful that one day we'd be able to land a proper home in the heart of the borough we'd grown to love. Eventually, we found our home. What the house lacked in size and updates, it more than made up for in character and its location, location, location. We were finally able to walk everywhere that was of importance to our young family, to both schools, the train station, the library, scoopsation, Tony's, the farmer's market, all the playgrounds, et cetera. On days we regret not expanding our home search to somewhere we'd have gotten more house for the money, we remember the joy it brings us to have safe-walking access to everything and how when our two young children are old enough to navigate independently, they'll have all of our wonderful town at their fingertips. To this point, that has been a comfort for us, and I hope it stays that way. Consider the towns in our area that are sought after for their walkable downtowns, Denville, Booton, Madison, and Chester, for example. All of these do have drive-through fast food, but they are on the outskirts of where pedestrian traffic takes place, with good reason. I imagine residents of Chester would hear nothing of a drive-through next to Dainty Dandelion Gift Shop or Taylor's Ice Cream Poller. Correct, Mr. Vitolo? Not only would it be hazardous to pedestrians along the already-high-traffic Main Street, I find it hard to believe that a drive-through fast-food joint fits into Chester's master plan to preserve historical significance, detraction from the town on several accounts, not an enhancement to it. Mr. Steck presented you with points of concern that could be the basis of denying this application. Mr. Vitolo attempted to discredit these points based on Mr. Steck's unfamiliarity with prior testimony. But remember that testimony is talk, and talk is cheap. Unless the applicant's plans reflect what was verbally addressed, the testimony is irrelevant to Mr. Steck's presentation and to Mr. Vitolo's attempt to discredit the witness. I urge you to take Mr. Steck's presentation to heart. Though he is a paid participant, he walks away with no potential for further revenue, unlike the applicant. Please consider this when determining which party puts our best interest before their own. Also, please consider the clientele coming in and out of a typical fast-food drive-through. Fast food, uh, food-delivery drivers incentivize to arrive quickly and are attentive to their GPS navigations. Young, inexperienced drivers with teenage friends and distractions in the car. Parents, like me, with hungry, cranky kids in the backseat, turning around to provide fries on demand, of which I am guilty. These are just, um, these are just a few examples of the types of distracted drivers associated with drive-through restaurants, and we are just a yes-vote from you away for ushering, from ushering in an influx of this into our town. Morris Plains is at a crossroads tonight. Should you approve this application, you'll open the floodgates. We simply do not have the capacity to become a downtown of drive-throughs and fast-food joints without sacrificing safety and the inherent draw to this place. I need not belabor the well-established point that any impact to safety, especially in the immediate vicinity of schools and neighborhoods, is a detraction and not an enhancement. Please fulfill your duty to the people of Morris Plains by denying this application. Understand that the people before you who speak passionately contribute to crowdfunding, did hear, and organize their neighborhoods to show up, are eager to reflect the outcome of this decision in the voting booth for the foreseeable future. Please represent us faithfully and do not approve this application. Thank you.
Okay, please state your name. Canfield Place. Spell your last.
B-E-L-L-O-M-O.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I've lived in my present house at thirty-four Canfield Place for twenty-one years and grew up in Morris Plains, attended Mountain Way and Borough Schools. Just to explain where my house is, the west side of my property borders Dunkin' Donuts' back parking lot, and the north end of my property shares a border with every house on the south side of Dayton. I can see in plain sight the yellow building from my bedroom and patio. If this goes through, I will be looking down on a two-lane drive-through from my bedroom at a constant flow of cars, and I'll hear the constant idling of cars from my patio. One of the experts said the level of noise coming from McDonald's would essentially be, I thought he said quieter than a library, maybe it was a study hall. Yeah, the building may be quieter, but what he didn't tell you is the decibel level of the seven hundred cars, constant car noise idling in our backyard. I'm afraid the car lights going into the drive-through will be constant. When they pull into the drive-through, the lights will go up as they hit the ramp and directly into my house. The two large trees, Uncle Frank, you wanted to keep? They're sparse at best. If you asked us, we don't want them. They're dirty. They don't do the job. It provides minimal barrier to the car lights going into the drive-through. I currently look directly at the building through those trees, and the new landscaping that is being put in will provide no barrier for at least five to ten years until they are broken. I'm a direct neighbor with six houses on Dayton. Most of those homes are young families. There are six little kids that live on just my side of Dayton. At least fourteen kids in total live on Dayton. Two, I know, are just learning how to ride a bike, and three are still being pushed in strollers. Dayton is a street that has had basketball hoops in the street. Kids would play wiffleball in their front yards and use the street as the outfield. We have minimal traffic because in the eighties, when I believe you, former Mayor Druksler, were in office, along with former Councilman Leo Buckley, worked to make Canfield a dead-end street. The reason behind this decision was to keep the homes and families on Academy, Canfield, and Dayton family-friendly and safe. What happened? Why are we now being ignored? Traffic will come down to Dayton as a result of this. Cars exiting onto Dayton from the drive-through will make a right. I appreciate the engineers trying to prevent it, but it is still possible. I'm also concerned cars exiting onto Speedway that will wait forever to make a left because of traffic will give up and use Dayton, Canfield, and Academy as a way to get to the light at Academy to make a left. I make a left-hand turn from Dayton onto Speedway every day. It's not easy, and many times I have done it when I get the chance to turn. Which brings me to another point about moving the crosswalk. You're moving the crosswalk closer to Dayton, I'm making that left and accelerating. Moving the crosswalk may be good for the drive-through, but it's more dangerous for us and pedestrians. Ooh. Last, parking will be an issue, especially the landscaping trucks and buses that want to go to the restaurant. We were told by the traffic engineer, I believe, that the buses can park on Speedway, or better yet, at the school. They can't, and they won't. They will park in our neighborhood. This proposal is a nightmare scenario for us. Why are we being ignored? Thank you.
That, that's it? There's no more witnesses?
Oh, no.
Okay. Is there any more to that? That's it, no more. Okay. I, I'm sorry, nobody got up. It's eleven o'clock. We're going to, uh, you can sit down, Mr. Ramoroso. We are going to, uh, start again on Wednesday evening at seven o'clock, and, um, we'll hear you then. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Anybody second it? All in favor? Thank you. Good evening.